Ready to go.
All right. The appointed hour of six thirty having been reached, I welcome everybody to this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals. My name is Steve Judge as Chair of the Amherst zoning board of appeals, I call this meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General laws, chapter thirty A, section eighteen. And the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the town of Amherst zoning board of appeals is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But the public can listen to the proceedings by clicking a link on the town's webpage. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty A and article ten. Special permit granting authority of the Amherst zoning bylaw. This public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. We will begin with a roll call of the regular members of the ZBA who have been impaneled for consideration of the items tonight. And then our awards associate members. I'm Steve Judge and I'm here. Mr. Langsdale.
Here.
Ms. Omira.
Here.
Ms. Parks.
Here.
Mr. Maxfield.
Here.
Ms. Waldman. Mr. Barrett. Mr. Greeney.
Here.
Mr. Meadows.
Here.
Also in attendance is Marine Pollock Planner. And Dave Wassevich, Senior Building Inspector. Is there anybody else from the staff that I did not recognize, Maureen?
I don't believe so, no.
That's it, okay. The zoning board is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of chapter forty of the general laws of the Commonwealth. For the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. One of the most important elements of the Amherst zoning bylaw is section ten point three eight. Specific findings from this section must be made for all of our decisions. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner, the petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing. After which the board will ask questions for clarification or additional information. After the board has completed its question, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen. The chair with the assistance of the staff will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, present your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input of the public is gathered. Followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition is heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merit. And the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has ninety days from the close of the hearing to follow decision. For a variance, the board has a hundred days from the date of the filing to of the request for the variance to file the decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk. There is a twenty day, twenty day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the registry of deeds to take effect. Amherst media will not be broadcasting tonight's hearing live, however, check their website for information on when it will be rebroadcast. Or you can view a recording of this meeting on the town's YouTube channel. Tonight, we have the following agenda. Public meeting on ZBA twenty twenty one dash zero eight Greg Stutzman for review and approval of the fence layout. Pursuant to condition two from the approved special permit ZBA FY twenty twenty one dash zero four. At thirteen twenty five Southeast Street. My map twenty three D parcel twelve outline our old residential. Outlying residents are old zoning district. ZBA twenty twenty one zero seven. Breck Group Amherst Massachusetts LP Aspen Heights Residential Community. For the review of the proposed design and location of the monument sign and proposed lease sign. Pursuant to conditions thirty seven and eighty of the approved special permit. ZBA FY twenty nineteen dash seventeen. At four oh eight North Hampton Road. Map parcel thirteen D fifty one. Professional and Research Park, PRP zoning district. And ZBA FY twenty twenty one dash zero nine. Fort River Solar. Two LLC. For the review and approval of a new solar full photovoltaic installation. Owner or operator's management plan and operation and management plan pursuant to condition fourteen. And the approved special permit. ZBA FY twenty nineteen zero nine. At one ninety one West Pomeroy Lane, map nineteen D parcel ten. Flood prone conservancy FPC neighborhood residents are an and outlying residents are all zoning districts. Public hearings on ZBA FY twenty twenty one dash zero three Pioneer Property Services LLC. Request a special permit to convert the existing detached garage to a residential unit. Which will increase the number of residential units converted dwellings from one to two under sections three point three two four. Nine point two two and ten point three eight of the zoning bylaw. Located at two seventy five East Pleasant Street. Map eleven B parcel sixty three. Neighborhood residents are in zoning district. Continued from October first, twenty twenty. ZBA FY twenty twenty dash forty two Fay Crosby. Request a special permit to allow a non-owner occupied duplex. Under sections three point three two one one. And ten point three eight of the zoning bylaw. Located at sixty five High Street. Map fourteen B parcel ninety general residence RG zoning district continued from September third, twenty twenty. And ZBA FY twenty twenty one dash zero six. Backyard ADUs. Request a special permit to allow a supplement detached dwelling supplemental detached dwelling. Unit as an accessory to a one family detached dwelling. Under sections five point zero one one one. And ten point three eight of the zoning bylaw. Located at thirty four Baker Street. Map thirteen D parcels thirty six parcel forty six. Neighborhood residents are in zoning district. After that, we will have a general public comment period that we always have for the public to comment on matters that were not before. The board tonight. So there are a couple items on this agenda that I think we can dispose of quickly. And I'd like to do that by and then I move some of them just to a later meeting as they've been requested. And then we'll have, we won't have to jump around, we can just get some things. Out of the way quickly. For example. ZBA twenty twenty dash forty two. The Fay Crosby request at sixty five High Street. She has requested that we move this. We continue the this hearing until March. And it seems to me that. She's not for a host of reasons, she's not prepared to go forward at this point in time, but doesn't want to lose the opportunity to do that. So it seems to me that that would be one we could move quickly on and dispose of and move to March. Now we needed a date certain for that, don't we, Maureen?
Yes, so let me. Let me look that up. So it'd either be the second or fourth Tuesday, which would be. The eleventh or the eighteenth.
So the second Thursday is the eleventh?
Correct.
So let's move it to the, let's do the eleven.
And the. The, the members that panel the September third. Public hearing for this application was is Steve Judge, Keith Langsdale, Tammy Parks, Dylan Maxfield and Craig Meadows.
Yes.
So they would be, yeah.
Yep, so we should have a roll call vote to do that, right? So I move, we continue this until. March eleventh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Maxfield, second, is there any discussion on the motion to move to continue the hearing?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Langsdale.
I, this is just procedural. By taking this on first, we're opening the public hearing. Do they then go back to open the public meeting, we have to close the public hearing and go back to the meeting? Or what?
I don't. That is a public, that is a public meeting item. I think we probably have to do that. We'd have to take, we would have to go and close this public hearing and then we'd have to open it up for the other matters. Which seems to be just a form, with that, that would close out the whole meeting, wouldn't it?
Well, I, I believe that you could open the public hearing now, close it and then reopen.
We suspend it, we can suspend it.
Sure, or you could, you know, conservative and start with the public meetings.
With all due respect, I think it would be simple just to start with the public meeting and.
All right. That's fine.
But technically, I believe, Mr. Chair, that they either.
Suspend it.
Or is, there is no wrong answer.
Yeah, we could suspend it. So I'm, we'll put this in advance and move to the. Public meeting portion, the first item is FY twenty twenty one, Mr. Stutzman's. Application at thirteen twenty five Southeast Street. This item. Has been. We have not, we have not completed the review of this item, the staff hasn't, or the members have not signed the decision yet. And the decision hasn't been, has been filed, so it's not final until it's filed. And so I think for this item, it doesn't make sense that we try to. Hear about a, take a position on an, on an adjustment to a decision that hasn't been, been made yet, it's not, hasn't been officially made. So I think we should move this one to our next meeting on December tenth. Have you talked to the applicant, Maureen?
Yeah, well, I, I sent an email correspondence to the applicant Greg Stutzman earlier today. Apologizing that the decision hasn't been finalized. In time of this meeting, so it would. It would make sense for the board to just postpone the review of the fence elevation provided. To when the decision will be. Signed and filed with the town clerk, so I would actually suggest to the ZBA Chair to. Not continue this to a date certain, it's just a public meeting. And so when the decision is signed and filed with the town clerk.
We can put it on the agenda.
We can put it on the agenda, so we only need, you know, forty eight hours advance notice. Although we like to.
Like to give as much as possible.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Um, so. I would move that we, that we continue this until the first meeting after which. The application has been filed, signed and filed. Do I have a second? Maxfield. Do I have, is there any discussion? If not. Call the roll. On this, it's Mr. Judge Langsdale, Omira Parks and Maxfield. So I vote aye, Mr. Langsdale.
Aye.
Ms. Omira.
Aye.
Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Great, it's taken care of. Next item on the public meeting is the Breck Group. Amherst LP Aspen Heights Residential Community at four oh eight North Hampton Road. Dealing with signs, proposed monuments, a monument sign and its proposed lease sign. We have received from. Them applicant submission, a memo from Dodd Creative Group, a plan set for the monument sign dated November fourth. A plan sent for the, set for the leasing center sign dated September twenty eighth. Town staff submissions, the project application report dated November sixth, twenty twenty. ZBA FY twenty nineteen seven seventeen approved special permit decision. Special permit decision from twenty twenty zero eight meeting summary. Twenty FY twenty twenty dash thirty one approved meeting summary this and. That's. It in terms of. In terms of submissions, I think, is there anything else? Who is, who is representing the applicant in this matter?
Gary Robinson and Bob Cardwell Dodd Creative Group.
Good, so repeat your names for the record again so that we can. Understand and put it in record. Yep. And where is Dodd Creative located?
We're in Dallas, Texas.
Okay. So please proceed with the. With your narrative.
All right, so we have a monument sign is the first thing of. It was proposed originally and approved by the ZBA. There was some, I think, measurement discrepancies in the original proposal. And what we've sent back to get reapproved is the correct measurements. There was, in the beginning, I think the Brex group just presented it as a rendering on their drawings. That went through, sure of all the documents that were that they provided, but it kind of came up at one point where we were discussing. The location of the monument with the city and they recommended it to go back through ZBA to make sure that it's approved.
That's concerning the monument plan, monument sign. And please also discuss the lease sign.
Okay, so on the lease sign, it's, it's back at the leasing center, back towards the back of the property. That is a typical sign that we do for these apartment communities. We do a lot of work for Aspen Heights and their contractors. And the leasing sign is just, you know, goes over the canopy that goes into the leasing center. It just identifies the space, it's a non-illuminated sign. It doesn't face any major roads, like I said, it's back at the back of the property. You can kind of see there's a little arrow there that draws down to it and you can see the main road. What is that? North Hampton out there to the right hand side. So they, whenever this was originally went through the ZBA back in a couple of years back with the Brex group. That sign was not included in, in what they proposed to the city. So we're trying to propose that now and see if we can get approval to move forward with permitting and everything on that sign.
Okay. The monument site, are you, anything else to provide to us before we open it up for questions from the board?
Any questions?
No, I, I did, the main monument, the main monument's still in the same location that originally was, we haven't moved it or anything. It's just there was some minor design changes over the time that just affected the measurements. Probably didn't change any of the square footage, it's just the drawing that was provided was just hadn't been updated to more current design.
So what I'm looking at on my screen is that the. The former, in green is the former monument sign and it's. Was in one place and you're proposing that it move to the former monument was green, you're proposing that it be, that it would be in blue. So it's. It looks like the old plan was incorrect or whether it's incorrect or not, you would like to have it in a different place than as it was approved in the. In the plan as approved.
Well, excuse me, the, the green. Former monument spot is. If you could return to the, the monument papers. That would be helpful.
So can we go back, yeah, go back a couple of pages?
Thank you. Now that shows. I think I had sent, I do believe that I had sent an updated set of drawings. That removed the green, blue and red indicators. And simply isolated in the newer documents. The green location as our current. As the current and the original location desired. So our second choice, we had removed second choice from that. So the blue one is no longer. An option in our current designs, which I believe I had uploaded or had emailed. And the first choice monument spot remains our first, our first choice. Yeah, so, so to add on to what Bob's saying is that green location was the original spot for the monument. It's got a twenty foot setback. We, you know, there's a utility easement through there, so as a second option, that was kind of talking with the client. If we couldn't go in that utility easement area, would that second location be okay? And the client, I think we had some prior meetings with the city and everything and we can be in that utility easement. If we get approval from the utilities that are there, which we have, so the secondary location is not, really shouldn't even be in this. That Bob said, we think we sent some additional paperwork that, that took that out and probably just didn't get updated.
If you can give me a minute, I can share the, what was emailed me.
Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, so I'm opening up what was emailed to me on Tuesday. Of this week. So bear with.
Yes, that's, that's the latest one, thank you. Thank you, Maureen. So this is the original location that the monument is going to be at. Again, there was just, the placement wasn't ever a question, you know, after we got approved to go on through the utility easements. The question was that the design of the sign had changed just a little bit and then just within. What was originally submitted was an old design drawing for that sign, Aspen has kind of updated their design. Has the same basic look, does some of the proportions changed a little bit in the, the structure?
So you're asking us. The. The question before the board, then, I think, Maureen, is to approve the design of the monument. Sign. And then secondly, to approve the placement and the design of the leasing sign. So is that correct?
That is correct, so if you refer, you could specifically refer to condition thirty seven, which is included in the project application report. Let's see here, I can pull that up myself. Okay, so. Sorry.
There it is.
So thirty, condition thirty seven states building design colors and architectural features shall match the approved elevation drawings. And presentation slides dated April eighteenth, twenty nineteen and prepared by Grant Architects and KSBA Architects LLC. And so. And then additionally, condition eighty states. The monument sign shall be constructed and installed, meeting the design found on the approved site plan dated. April eighteenth, twenty nineteen, chaired by the Berkshire Design Group. The design shall be in compliance with article eight point two of the zoning bylaw. Applicant shall return to the zoning board of appeals at a public meeting for review of the, of the sign prior to the issuance of the bill, of a building permit. All necessary building permits shall be required prior to the sign being installed. So after review of. The zoning bylaw section eight point two three zero point one. The, the monument. Sign as proposed, which is sixty square feet in area and six feet in height meets the zoning bylaw. Under section eight point two three zero point one. And. And then. The board needs to make the finding that this does match. The design, the building design colors and architectural features. So. I believe, hold on a second. We go back up.
There we go.
Yeah, and. So, so your specific review is under, is regarding condition thirty seven and eighty. And it does appear that it meets the design architectural feature of, of the, of the. Overall project. And, and both signs as presented meet the dimensional requirements for signage under the zoning bylaw.
And the monument sign was included in, there was a monument sign included in the original. Decision releasing sign is new, so I think, people have any questions, comments about the monument sign? Any board member?
I can.
Yes, Mr. Langsdale.
How is this sign to be illuminated?
It's LED illuminated, all the, the channel letters that are on there are halo lit. So not the, the direct face of the letter does not light, it, it has a light that kind of goes around the perimeter of the letters. Oh, I'm sorry, Bob just corrected me, these are facelit channelers. Sorry, I was thinking of another Aston project that we're working on currently. It's going to utilize the LEDs however. Yeah, so LED illuminated, the, the lighting comes through the base of the letters. The background doesn't illuminate, just the letters themselves, Aspen Heights.
Any other additional questions?
And, and the appearance that the leasing center ID sign is non-illuminated, is that correct?
That's correct, it's non-illuminated.
And it's twenty one inches, this is how, the sign is twenty one inches high, is that correct?
The letters.
Yeah, the letters.
The letters, yes, including the very top of the leaf, the letters are actually eighteen inches. If you add stem on the leaf, it goes to twenty one.
Twenty one.
And then we have a mounting, mounting raceway, it's the letters we were attached to, so it takes it to twenty five. But the other part of the sign is twenty one.
Any additional questions or comments from board members? All right. We have to make a fine, we have to approve the, we don't have to, I mean, the question before the board is whether we approve the two. Signs, monument sign and the lease sign. Do it, is, I move that we approve the, the monument sign as proposed in the. Documents submitted to us today and the lease sign as proposed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Maxfield, is there any discussion? No discussion. Vote occurs on the, the motion and in this, it is the regular members. So I vote aye. Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Ms. Omira.
Aye.
Mr. Langsdale.
Aye.
Motion carries five, nothing to the honest. The signs are approved.
Thank you, thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
The next order of business is for ZBA FY twenty twenty one Fort River Solar two LLC. Located at one ninety one Pomeroy Lane. What we've received on that has been. We've received. An email from Mr. Reedy. an email from Mr. Reedy on November 6th detailing the plan, the operating and maintenance as well as management plan, he would have it. It also describes some changes to the prop, to the project. We've received a aerial mockup of the changes in equipment pad and existing, from the existing equipment pad and various sundry cut sheets from the applicant regarding the, I think it's a battery storage facility. And also description of the difference in the chain, in the solar panels. And we've received, and we, we have compiled special permits from the past, June 19th, June of 2019, as well as we received today, the, the management plan, the approved management plan and the approved operating and maintenance plan. This, the issue before us today, at this, on this, on this application is that the building commissioner has looked at the changes to the site and deemed them as not substantial. And it's because, I mean, there are things like they're more efficient at solar collectors and there's a bigger battery storage area. But what is, what is, I think, significant is the change in ownership or operator of the, of the, of the solar farm. And so that's the issue before us today, as I understand it. So who's representing the, the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm Reedy, attorney with Bacon Wilson in Amherst.
All right, please run us through what you would, what you're proposing.
Sure, I'll take it away. First, good evening, good to see everybody. I hope everybody's doing well. As I said, for the record, Tom Reedy, attorney with Bacon Wilson in Amherst, here on behalf of Fort River Solar 2 LLC. And so as you likely realize by now, 191 West Pomeroy Lane is the old Hickory Ridge Golf Course in town. It was approved, Applied Golf Hickory brought it through the approval process and then effectively sold their assets to Fort River Solar 2. So Fort River Solar 2 is going to be the project company. They're going to be the company that is ultimately going to be building and operating this array. There is an agreement for that operating entity to be, they're called AMP Energy, AMP Development. They've got a portfolio in, in Massachusetts. I think they were actually proposing another array in Amherst. I personally have worked with them. I'm, I'm very impressed with them. They're incredibly responsive, very professional, they know their stuff. So as part of that transaction, we just have to clean up some things, notably having the permit transferred, transferred from Applied Golf Hickory to Fort River Solar 2 LLC. There are a couple of things that the building commissioner deemed as not substantial. Everything staying within the fence line, the array is just changing a bit from a fixed tilt to a single axis tracker system. We're adding battery storage, the, the DC, the nameplate capacity is increasing. The management plan was updated to effectively be the exact same thing that was approved, except it was updated to show Fort River Solar 2 as the owner. And then the operation and maintenance plan is substantively the same as it comes to electrical and technical maintenance and inspection schedule and the property maintenance and inspection schedule. So if you look at it, it was proposed by Direct Energy Solar. The, the first page of that approved operation and maintenance plan identifies who and the panels that's going to change. And we're happy to submit that one page of change to the building department prior to receipt of a building permit. But otherwise, like the inspection and the maintenance schedule, that's all going to be the same. So however the board wants to deal with it, you know, substantively, like I said, it's, it's the same except for some of the, the panel information, the owner information, et cetera. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the, the project, the transfer or anything like that.
So the, the one change in the operation and maintenance plan is direct solar is removed and Fort River is.
It'll be Fort River Solar 2, yeah, and then, you know, technically it goes to 6.212 megawatts. And then when you go to that first page, the photovoltaic system specification will change because they're just more efficient panels now. These are, not to get into too much detail, but these are 345s. I think they're using like 440s. So that's the wattage that these modules can take, the panels can take. And they're, they're just getting more efficient over time. When this project was originally designed a couple of years ago, this was the technology, now the technology has approved. So you'll see that this page changes, but then the balance of the pages for the, the actual inspection schedule, that won't change.
And the last question I have, Mr. Reedy, is the, was there battery, I, I, remind me, were there batteries on the site before?
I don't believe so.
Right?
The batteries.
That's why the pads are there.
Correct. There was an equipment pad before, I believe, for an inverter and now the pad is large enough for the battery storage in the inverter.
Right, and the one question there is, in the past, when we've done this, the fire department has to be able, has to be informed of the, the battery and you have to work with them. You can't build it without the fire department's approval. But at some point you have to reach out to them.
Yeah.
Either their approval or their comments.
Yeah, that is correct. So the, the applicant would need, as part of the building permit process, would need to go, you have it reviewed by the inspection services and any other applicable department such as the fire prevention officer, Mike Roy.
Okay. Are there questions from the board regarding this, the application? All right, we're going to need a vote, a vote on this. So on this item, we have the same panel. No, Mr. Meadows will be sitting in on this panel. And Ms. O'Meara will not be sitting in. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's, I got the wrong one here. Thank, just a second. That was on that other app, that was in the other agenda. The Fort River is, it's the, it's the, the regular members, right, Maureen?
Yep.
Yep. So the motion is to approve the, the change, listening to the change of ownership and of the, the project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. O'Meara, seconds. Roll call, is there a discussion on the motion? If not, we'll call the roll. I vote aye. Ms. O'Meara?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous, the motion carries. All right, thank you very much.
Take care. See ya.
The next order of business is to, is a public hearing. And what I'd like to do is to open the public hearing and dispose of ZBA 2020-42 at 65 High Street. As we said before, the applicant has written, we received an email from the applicant requesting that it be moved to a later date in March. We've also received, and I think that's, because she can't be here until then. And there's some, there's reasons stated in her email why she can't be here. So I have no problem with that and we picked the date of March 11th to continue this until that time. And that gives her a chance to work with the city, the town folks to try to figure this out, as well as there's a potential, maybe a sale or something else that she's working on. It's, so I move that we continue this till March 11th. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All right, if there's no discussion, this is the roll call vote. And on this, if I got it right, we, this was the one where Mr. Meadows is sitting in and Ms. O'Meara is not. So roll call vote is required. I vote aye. Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
The vote's unanimous and the motion carries to move the item to March 11th, 2021. The next order of business is Pioneer Property Services LLC. Requesting requesting a special permit to convert an existing detached garage to a residential unit, which will increase the number of residential units from one to two under sections 3.324, 9.22 and 10.38 of the zoning bylaw, located at 275 East Pleasant Street. This is continued from October 1st. And this is also Mr. Meadows is sitting on this panel. And Ms. O'Meara is not. So I'd like to go through what we have received regarding this application since our October 1st meeting. The applicant has submitted a request to continue the public hearing until a date certain in January. The planning board report to the, we received a planning board report on the, to the town meeting. A warrant article 57 and 58 dated May 1st, 1986, that deals specifically with, as we do in section 3.3241. Public comments, we've received comments from Mr., submitted prior to the October 1st meeting, there were five comments subsequent, which we mentioned at that time. Subsequent to that, we've received public comments from Susan Rosney dated October 6th. Comments from RT Rosnoy dated October 14th. Comments and photos from Karen LaRaja dated October 21st. Comments from RT Rosnoy dated November 3rd. And comments from Steve Schreiber dated November 3rd, 2020. I think that's every, is there, was there another one, Maureen? Did we get another, the last minute?
Yeah, yeah.
November 11th?
Yep.
Yep, on November 11th, from Susan Rosnoy.
Correct.
An email, and I think we received a, I just got two from Susan Rosnoy. Is there, is there another one?
Um, bear with me one second. There is one more. Susan Rosnoy submitted one on November 11th. And, bear with me, sorry. And, oh, and Ray LaRaja submitted a public comment and photographs on November 12th today.
Thank you, I did see that. Yep. So we have on this item, there has been some public comments. Well, who's, first of all, who's representing the applicant?
That would be me this evening, Bucky Sparkle.
And you're with who, Mr. Sparkle?
I'm with myself. I'm a civil engineer, but I am rece- representing Pioneer Property Services tonight.
I was just asking about your firm name.
Oh, the Zen Engineer.
Zen Engineer, okay. There's been a lot of public comment raised about the question as to if ZBA can approve this application under section 3.3241. That's kind of a threshold question, I think, for the, for the board. I would like to have public comment on that question, rather than on the merits of the application tonight. If the board is unclear about its authority to act on this application, it seems to me it's unfair to the, ask the applicant to invest more time and money on this problem, on this project until that is just, till that is decided. So what I'd like to do is hear from Mr. Sparkle about what, I think he's been recently retained on this project, hear from Mr. Sparkle and then have just got public comment on the question of ZBA's jurisdiction, for lack of a better term, under 3.3241 on this application. And then decide if we want to move forward with the continuation or if we want to get further clarification. So, Mr. Sparkle, why don't you describe what your, what, make your presentation?
Sure. Well, this is going to be a relatively easy presentation, mainly because I found out yesterday that I was going to be heading up this application. So to a degree, I'm getting up to speed. Similarly, I know we have attorney Michael Pill on, who is also working in tandem with me to support this application. And he's really a little more qualified to talk about any dwelling conversion and bylaw issues. So I, I will invite Michael to speak up at any point where he feels that's necessary or I'm just going right off the rails. I have just a, a little bit, I, I am trying to get up to speed on this and, and instead of going through the, the details of what we're hoping to do, because this has already been presented already. I want to ask directly about the dwelling conversion. It doesn't sound like attorney Joel Bard has provided any kind of statement or commentary on the applicability of section 3.324 and the ZBA's ability to even make an approval for a pre-existing not conforming situation as we are here now. Did Joel say anything?
You know, that's, we haven't, I have not discussed that with Joel yet. So the, the question for us, we'll have a discussion amongst board members about that and then we'll make a decision as to whether to talk to the town council or to proceed ourselves. So I, if you don't have a, Mr. Sparkle, I think if you don't have a lot of, of substantive proposals around, about the project, just because you only just been hired for 24 hours, totally understandable. I'm not going to force you to.
I, I do have a few other things to, to say that are slightly outside of the dwelling.
But let's deal with the zoning issues separately. So you deal with the.
The tech stuff.
Right.
Sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't know where to put my hand. So I believe the ZBA chair has been asked, is asking the applicant for an update on the project overall. And so I could speak to that a little bit, is, so the, the, the board opened the public hearing, I believe, on October 1st to 2020. And there were concerns raised by the board. And after that meeting, I provided a summary to Neil Mendonson, the applicant. And I have now forwarded that email to, to Bucky Sparkle, I believe, earlier today, highlighting the different topics. And I believe that's one of the intentions of Bucky Sparkle to be hired. For, for instance, there are items of concern regarding drainage, providing a landscape plan, concerns regarding parking, concerns regarding the fence, light fixtures, concerns surrounding the resident manager and concerns raised about the number of bedrooms. And I, and I have also provided Bucky Sparkle a YouTube recording of the meeting, so he can at his leisure to get up.
I haven't seen that yet. I, I do have a few more things to say. I, I will say, Maureen, thank you for the, the filler information there, the background. It is, it is my understanding that Mr. Mendelson is looking to do a two-bedroom dwelling conversion instead of a three-bedroom, looking to do four parking spaces behind the building in a manner that would allow vehicles to turn around safely behind the building so they could pull out safely onto strong, strong street. And I will be taking a look at stormwater management for that property. We seem to have adequate space to do something pretty reasonable back there. I believe Mr. Mendelson is also looking at formulating a, a process to have a resident manager there that is still in the works. So I, I don't have anything quite certain on that at this point, but he is considering it. And I, I understand we need to do a little bit more landscaping around there. There's a possibility for a fence. Although I will say I was able to make a stop at the site today. And I, I presume other board members have perhaps had an opportunity to look there as a standard site visit. I, I do find that the property, the side and rear yard are fairly well betressed by evergreens at this point, relatively mature. They are not an, an impenetrable wall, but they do offer quite a bit of screening to begin with. Something that could be supplemented, I'm sure, to, to make a very significant screen, if, if that were important to the neighbors. And I think Pioneer Property Services is quite amenable to that. I've looked at some of the lighting issues and we'll be going over those in a little more detail to make sure that we've got, you know, downcast lights. We're not going to be bothering any of the neighbors with those. with those while providing safe navigation around the property. So that's kind of where I'm at. We are still waiting for a survey for the topographic so I can do the stormwater work. That is the thing that I need on a technical side for that. But while we're waiting, I think that gives us a little opportunity to address some of these other concerns and comments. And I do look forward to reviewing the October 1st ZBA Zoom video. But as far as the dwelling conversion goes, I think if I said anymore, I would just be sticking my foot in my mouth at this point. It seems to me, despite saying that, here I go anyway. It seems to me that, that there is standard, standard number eight does allow the ZBA to have a fair amount of leeway in what it is able to approve for non-conforming situations. Obviously, this is being contested by neighbors and usually boards don't take specific action until they get some backup from legal counsel. So I feel like personally, I'm a little stuck until we hear from Joel.
Mr. Mr. Sparkle, I, you know, we, you understand you just were retained yesterday. So we don't expect much more. You've given us a good overview of what you're looking at and that's, that's helpful. I don't think we should. I think we should open the next, after that, unless anybody has questions specifically about the, the project and not the legal issues, we can entertain those now. And then I'd like to open up a public comment on the question of the board's authority under a point, or 3.3241 and specifically clause eight. And so first of all, if there are any questions for Mr. Sparkle regarding the actual project landscaping, the building, anything else that he said tonight? Okay. If not, then the issue has been raised from neighbors that the questioning the ability of the ZBA to grant this app to consider this application. And so I'd like to, I'd like to get just a brief summary, perhaps, Mr. Washevich, you could help us by just giving us a brief summary of the issue. I think it comes down to the fact that 3.3241 has seven or eight conditions that have to be met. 12 conditions that have to be met. The first condition is that it has to meet all the conditions. And condition eight is the conditions that allows the special permit granting authority to modify the dimensional requirements of table three to one time only for any parcel, allow a conversion from section 3.3241 that would add one additional unit, only if it finds an modification would be in accordance with provisions of section 9.22. In those zoning districts where two family detached duplex dwellings are not permitted, conversion of a non-conforming single-family dwelling unit may result in two or more dwelling units under the applicable permit. So there's been some questions raised by the public about whether eight clause eight or section eight applies in this instance. And I'd like to hear some comment about that before we as a board decide if we want to get town council approval or if we feel we have sufficient authority to move on this and, and continue the hearing at a later date. So, so if there's questions in the board first, Mr. Meadows?
Personally, I'd like to hear from town council before we go forward.
Well, I, so you'd, you'd encourage us to get an opinion from town council on this is what you're saying? You're not asking to, to stop the discussion at this point?
No.
No.
Yeah. Opinion is necessary.
Mr. Washevich?
Yeah, just you want a little clarification on item eight?
Yeah.
So talking to building commissioner, Rob Moore, he has indicated that number eight has been referred to many times on projects like this where there are non-conformances for some reason or other. And basically, it looks like that item, item eight allows the board to make a decision on a one-time only in cases where you're only adding a single dwelling to the property. And it is something, a practice that the ZBA has done in the past. So in this particular case, we're talking about a property that appears to be, or it is too small for current zoning. It is a pre-existing non-conforming property. But item eight was created over time and there's been reference to a, a planning more, planning board meeting that explained how this came about. But basically, it was created to allow projects like this that in any other setting would not be able to happen. And you're going to find many properties in Amherst that will have some non-conformance when or the other, whether it be step back or, or lock coverage or something that wouldn't allow a project like this to go forward. But Amherst has always been supportive of adding more housing to its stock. So this is a case where item eight would allow you to do that. And it has been used.
Further, your comment, I reviewed the 1986 proposal to town meeting that talked about adding what became eventually this article eight and a talk specifically as David said about the goal of that provision and the goal of that warrant was to allow, to recognize that there's lots of homes that were built before the zoning laws that we currently operate under and that they should not be, because they're, they're pre-existing, they should not be prohibited from making changes such as adding supplemental dwellings and other kinds of converted dwellings to this, to the property. And that there's, as he said, there's all sorts of of buildings and homes in this, in this town that existed prior to the, the zoning law, zoning bylaws and the, and the requirements. And that this has been used continually, often, frequently by the ZBA to approve projects. So I would, what I'd like to get from, I'd like to hear from either the public or the, or the applicant, if they have other opinions regarding this, so we can discuss it with the, with that, with that informing our debate.
I believe attorney Pill.
Bill. Michael Pills, Green Myles Lipton. Like Bucky, I was retained yesterday. And so I haven't had time to do the thorough research and preparation of a memorandum. What I can say, based on a fair amount of experience in being specialized in this area. First, um, I haven't seen any legal authority. I haven't studied as thoroughly as I will the comments from the public, I think at least one of whom is an attorney and says he's a specialized land use or land litigation attorney. But law is referenced to authority, lawyers reason by analogy from court cases, legislation, and exactly what the chair just did, for example, which is to go back and look at what amounts to an expression of legislative intent. And also, while you're certainly not bound by precedent, what Mr. Washevich did to go back and look at the history of how something has been applied. And so, you know, maybe there's some citation to court cases or other legal authority from the neighbors, especially the one who's an attorney. If there isn't, that would be very disappointing and I think would indicate a, a lack of any merit to their argument. Then there's at least three things that I want to explore and if necessary, do a memorandum. One is it is very, very well established. And I think in a prior case to this board, not too long ago, I, I pointed out for another section of the bylaw that it is very well established for a zoning bylaw to authorize a board by special permit to vary dimensional requirements that would otherwise require a variance. And, and that's exactly what section eight does. And as Mr. Washevich and the chair who pointed out, it's for the reasons just stated. There are also two rules of statutory construction that the neighbors' comments have ignored. One of them is that if there are eight provisions, you try to give effect to everything that the legislative body, in this case, the former town meeting, has enacted because they're the, 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 the ones who set the, the policy to be implemented by the board with the special permit discretion. The other is that you do not simply read out of existence what the legislative body has enacted. And it seems like that's what the neighbors are asking this board to do. And, and I'm at a loss to understand what their basis is with any legal authority or legal argument to say, pick up and apply, I think it's section two that has the dimension requirements, but on the other hand, simply ignore, I believe it's section eight, that authorizes the board to vary that. So in a nutshell, that's, that's where I'm coming from. If town council, you know, as I hope he will, supports the validity of that legislation, I'm not sure there's any need for me to do a whole lot more. I certainly want to try to economize on my time and, and the applicant's money. If town council agrees with the, the neighbors, then I would want to see what he writes. He is a first-rate land lawyer. He and I have dealt with each other, God, going back to the 1980s. And, and I would want to see what he thinks. And I would either, you know, if it's persuasive, I, when the other lawyer's right, you have to acknowledge it. If I disagree, then I would do the research and write a formal memorandum. And if he agrees that the bylaw is valid, I guess the question would be if the board is inclined to accept that as sufficient, then I'm not sure there's a whole lot more for, for me to do. But I thank you for giving me a chance to at least make these preliminary comments on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pill. I'd like to move it to public comment. So I remind people to, of public to address the board with your, your comments. I think about four, four and a half minutes of time for everybody. That's what Mr. Pill consumed. And I'd want to make sure that you have as much time as attorney Pill has. So who's first? I guess, Mr. Schreiber?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm Steve Schreiber. I live in the neighborhood. I'm not in a butter. And I'm the author of one of those letters. So I'm an architect. I was on the planning board for 10 years. And I'm currently on the town council, but I want to make clear that I'm not speaking as a town counselor, counselor with a C, not with a S. I'm speaking as a private citizen and a friend of the Butters. So I'm the one that pointed out that there's a list of 12 conditions that must be met. So Maureen Pollock said that in her letter to me when I was questioning this and Mr. Judge just said that also. There are 12 conditions that must be met. Condition two cannot be met. So really, the game's over at condition two. There was an error message there. That's when the review should end. I fully understand that in 1986, the intent was to have condition two married to condition eight. That is not how it reads. It reads as a list. You can't get beyond condition two. So the, the other thing is that land use laws are meant to protect the property rights of the property owner, right, the developer, but they're also meant to protect the property rights of the Butters, you know, of course, in the larger community as well. So one cannot be expected. One cannot expect neighbors to troll through a 1986 document to try to figure out what the original intent of a bylaw is. The bylaw is what it is. The bylaw says what it says. And it says that the minimum lot area must be met. So the other thing is the zoning board of appeals is not the legislative branch. So I'm actually kind of concerned to hear that the zoning board of appeals has basically interpreted this in a certain way, basically acting as a legislative body. It's a very poorly written bylaw. The bylaw should be corrected. The zoning board of appeals should not be interpreted in a way that it's not written. So if they feel that it cannot, if they feel it should be written in a different way, it should be sent back through the process and be written so that it matches what the 1986 intent was. There was a major rewrite of this in 2012. I assume that the zoning board of appeals has looked at that also.
Do you want to eat? This is going to be going on for a while. On everyone.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So anyway, I'm finished. So that's, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. I think the next is Mr. Rosnoy.
One minute. Okay, I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And I'd like to reinforce what Stephen Schreiber just said, but also point out that I'm Richard Rosnoy, first of all, from 11 Strong Street and, and a butter to this parcel. I'd like to reinforce what Stephen Schreiber was just saying, but also point out that he and I have requested that this board and the planning department contact town council for this opinion. So I'm encouraged that you're considering it, but I actually wish that it maybe might have already happened. Nevertheless, I, I do strongly support that that's the way this body should go. Because as we've noted, there are 12 standards, conditions. And the bylaw says that all 12 standards, conditions must be met. Now granted, number eight is thrown in there in the middle of it. But even after number eight was thrown in, which you, some people have commented on, provides some sort of an exception to some requirements. Even after number eight was there, the bylaw still said all 12 requirements must be met. That is not a discretionary interpretation that this board can apply to this application. That's a requirement. I'd also like to point out that Mr. Pill actually reinforced the concept that the entire list of 12 should be read in their entirety. And he actually said that in his statement and I would, I would actually support that. If you read it all in their entirety, then you get to standard number two, which must be met. There's no question in that it must be met because all 12 must be, all 12 must be met. The the fact that the 20, the 2012 amendments adopted by town meeting reinforce this, should I, I think be further proof to you that it's not a discretionary interpretation that you can apply, but a mandatory directive. I'd also, well, I guess I'll stop there. I mean, it's, it's kind of obvious to me that if you ask town council for an official opinion that this question will be resolved and we can proceed one way or the other. I agree with Mr. Pill that if town council agrees that this issue is, is not discretionary and that you must comply with it, that's one thing. And if the town council says, well, you know, they're, they're citing various legal, legal sources that say that it's acceptable to proceed. Then we'll have an argument at a further time and some other, and some other venue. But if that's the case, okay. One other minor comment I have, which is that it was mentioned by Mr. Pill that you have authorization to grant a permit. This is the zoning board of appeals and this is a, an application for a special permit. There is no requirement for you to authorize a special permit. A special permit is not granted as of right, as you know. A special permit, this board has every opportunity to review us an application for special permit with great discretion and determine on the totality of the facts and the law as to whether to grant it. This is not a site plan review as of right application by the applicant. This is an application for a special permit. Thank you. This is an application for a special permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosnoy. I think the last person that I was asking to speak is is it Taryn LaRaja? I don't have the full name. I'm sorry.
Taryn LaRaja, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right. So I would like to just pick up, pick up right where my neighbor, Richard, left off. And I want to thank Steve also for coming and joining. So they know a lot more about the laws, which hopefully you do too. But I just want to pick up where Richard left off is, even if somehow it's, you know, you're willing to make exceptions to these rules, which don't seem like there should be exceptions made. You know, this is why we have this board. Like, you don't have to approve this special permit just because someone's asking for it. And, you know, having read the letters, I mean, I've written one and read the letters from my husband and all the neighbors. And it's just like, there's so many reasons which just show that this project really has, like, I think against all the reasons that this was put together, even to make an exception. This isn't for the good of the town. This is for, you know, a tenement-style, you know, living situation for students. And I think honestly, the photos that we've spent, that have been sent in, which in the past month have recorded so many cars parked at the site, not three cars, but most days, four cars, five cars. And this is before the extra unit is added. And also, you would think perhaps, you know, as Mr. Mendelson suggested, being a neighbor nearby, that he was going to be so on top of this that the fact that there are already all these cars, you know, parked this way and that way all over the property, it just suggests that even lowering the number of parking spaces. So, okay, so there are going to be four parking spaces. My guess is there are going to be eight cars crammed in there, like, pretty much every Friday and Saturday night, which we've seen, you know, already, before this is even getting approved. So I'm very concerned about the danger posed to children and neighbors in the, you know, who live nearby, that all these extra cars are going to cause. And I hope that everyone will really look to those letters and think, you know, is this really a good idea? Is this really what the town had in mind? When there was even the suggestion that maybe there could be exceptions to these rules that probably, you know, at least for sure in this case, don't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaRaja. I think we have one more member of the public that wishes to comment, Jonathan Holting-Cohen. His hand has disappeared. His raised hand has disappeared. Now it's back. Now it's gone.
Hello, Jonathan?
There we go.
Can you talk? Hold on a second. Okay, I'm gonna press the button one more time.
Hello. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. I'm at 259 East Pleasant Street. And, yeah, there's a lot of legal discussion, and I leave that to legal experts. And I would be interested to hear more about how this all shakes out. But, yeah, I would like to reinforce that you please use your discretion when it comes to this project and try to get to the bottom of the spirit of it. And I understand that there's a spirit in this town of increasing housing, and I think that's really important. And I'm really curious about the modifications that are being made. And I just really hope that this is actually a responsible project. I think my neighbors and I have a lot of, I think, pretty legitimate concerns. And I, you know, we're a little bit downhill, and I'm really curious about how the water runoff will be handled. We actually have a lot of basement issues that we've had to attend to already, even before this project. So that's, you know, I'd like to reinforce that. And I know this portion of the meeting is really about whether or not the zoning board can decide. And I'm not really sure. I've read the same things. I interpreted the 12 pieces of information as 12 pieces of information. But I just do hope that you all use your discretion in considering this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it looks like Richard Rosnoy would like to speak again. Hold on a second.
Do you have something new to say?
Yes, yes, thank you. I'll be brief here. And I just wanted to point out, the reason this conflict between standard number two and standard number eight is so important here is because of the size of this particular parcel. Some precedent was mentioned by, I believe, one of your board members and others about how number eight can override number two. And of course, every land use issue is unique in its own way. That's why it's a part of equitable law. But the reason condition number two is so important here is because of the specifics of this case and the limited space for this parcel, the size of the building that we're talking about, and the application of the combination of how everything would fit together in this particular instance. The exceptions when condition number eight had been applied, I, of course, I'm not familiar with every one of them, but I would imagine that none of them talks about such a confined lot as this with such small buildings as this, trying to put so many people into such a confined area and so many parking areas, parking spaces into a confined area. So I just wanted to point out that it's not just a theoretical standard number two versus standard number eight. It's very practical in this particular application. Thank you.
So what I'd like to do is keep everybody having just, you know, one comment, unless there's something that you haven't said or it hasn't been said by anybody else, and then go to discussion from the board. So if there is, if you've spoken already and you're going, and you're saying something that somebody else has already said, I would guess it's not adding much to our discussion. But if there's something that absolutely must be said, please make it fairly quickly and then make your point quickly, and we can move on to discussion amongst the board. Ms. LaRaja?
Oh, I, but I actually clicked on.
Okay. All right, Mr. Schreiber. Yep.
I am sorry. I just wanted to add one more thing, and that's dimensional table, table number, table three dimensional regulation. So that has not been discussed much. But that too is extremely important because this outlines really every zoning district and every dimensional requirement. So you'll notice that under this particular zone RN, there are no asterisks for the basic lot area or the additional lot area per family. In contrast, there are asterisks on RG, on BL, et cetera, et cetera. But RN has no exceptions. So you also have to take that into account in terms of what the intent of the writers of the bylaw was. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Ms. LaRaja?
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay. No, I mean, and maybe this is completely unrelated, but this is the first time, we've been living in our house for 18 years, and we have the town coming to, like, unclog sewage coming into our bathtub. And I don't know if it has anything to do with the students who are living in the property next door, but all I'm saying is we've never had any problem with, you know, with that before. And it's getting me concerned, like, is this related already to students living on the corner and adding yet more? Would that add to the problems that we're having that we've never had? So maybe it's completely unrelated, but it did strike me that maybe there's some connection.
Okay, that's, we really want to keep it on the issue of 3.3241 at this point in time. So there's no other discussion from the public on 3.3241. I'd like to open it up to the board discussion. But before we start, I was spending time in the last couple of days looking at this, especially today. And my initial impression was that there is no reason for section eight, which gives the special permanent granting authority, us, the ability to modify dimensional requirements of table three, gives us, gives the board the authority to modify the dimensional requirements of table three to, on a one-time only, for any parcel, allow a conversion under section 3.3241 that would add one additional unit. Only if it's only if it finds a modification would be in accordance with precision of section 9.22. And section 9.22, when I look at it, excuse me, 9.22 authorizes the ZBA to allow non-conforming use of building structure lands to be changed, specify use not substantially different in character or in its effect on the neighborhood or on property in the vicinity. The said authority may also authorize under special permit a non-conforming use, structure, or land to be extended to or a non-conforming building to be structurally altered, enlarged, or reconstructed. Provided that the authority finds that such alteration, enlargement, or reconstruction shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existing non-conform use or non-conforming building. And so when I look at the whole, I look at the whole context of the zoning bylaws. We have a section that says there are 12 conditions that must be made. One of those conditions is that, is that you can waive some of the requirements contained in this, in this section, one of these 12 conditions. You can waive them on a one-time basis if you do that under 9.22. And under 9.22, which we use all the time, the value is, or the judgment that we have to make is the finding we have to make, I think is the better way to say that, is that the alteration, enlargement, or reconstruction shall not be more substantially, shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use or non-conforming building. It seems to me that it begs that the question for us is whether wide condition eight would exist if it wasn't there to be used in those conditions in which you had non-conforming old buildings that just could not meet the, could not meet the dimensional requirements because they existed, many of them, before the bylaws were written. And so in trying to understand the legislative intent of town meeting at that time and looking back to old documents, it seems to me it's there for a purpose. And the ZBA has used this time and time again in the past in order to accommodate requests that we judge, that the ZBA has judged, do not serve to the detriment, the detriment of the neighborhood. So that's how I look at it. And I'd like to hear from other members of the board or staff regarding what they think and their judgment. And Mr. Meadows, your hand was up.
I'm sorry, but I was on town meeting in 1986. And the way that this was presented to us was that, if I recall correctly, it was presented as though we were attempting to allow what was presented, that was mother-in-law apartments by the conversion of separate garages on conforming lots, such that it wouldn't deny people who had the need to bring illing parents or single parents into a position where they could care for them close by. There was, I don't recall anything at that time about non-conforming lots being allowed to use separate garages to be converted into mother-in-law apartments. I think it's been misconstrued over time to indicate that there was an attempt to increase the number of dwelling units in the center of town such that garages could be converted into student apartments, et cetera. That was not the original intent. It was not the original intent as far as the way it was presented to town meeting. It may have been, have drifted into the consideration of the town, of members of the planning board, particularly when Jonathan Tucker was chairing the planning, the planning department. But that was never the intent, as far as it was prevented, presented to town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Any other comments from board members seated for this? Mr. Maxfield?
I guess, I guess maybe I'm not quite as prepared for this one as I thought I was. I'm not entirely sure what it is that we're focusing on here at the moment. Is it, are we talking about our authority to make a decision on this? Are we talking about, is the plan just not able to move forward based on the laws as they're written? So we shouldn't proceed? I'm not quite understanding what we're going for here at this point. We're not talking about the project itself. We're just talking about whether or not the project can proceed. And it's my understanding that we do have the authority to proceed on this if we want and then make these findings, then we might say they don't meet the findings. But are we saying, at this point, we are saying outright they don't meet the findings? Or we're saying we don't have the authority to even get to that point?
I don't think we're making any, I don't think anybody on the board is making a decision about, or making a statement about whether we have, whether this project meets the findings or not. What they're saying is that number two has certain requirements that this project cannot meet. And if you don't use number, if you can't use number eight, then there's real question as to whether this project can go forward. Right? That seems to me to be the issue there. And so the question is, does eight amend to? Does eight stand on its own, just as every other provision in this section does? And 3.3241, does they stand on their own? Or is eight not, not have the force and effect to allow the ZBA on a one-time basis to amend the dimensional requirements and the dimensional chart? And so what we're trying to do is get a feeling for that. And if the board feels that, you know, we're confident with this, we don't need to go to the town council and get an opinion from him or her that that's the right, that that's our authority. We've been doing it before. We're going to go ahead and we're confident of that. Then we can proceed and schedule this application for a hearing at a later date. If we want, we can say, we're not sure about that. We have some questions. So let's clear this up and let's ask town council to write an opinion and then ask other attorneys to weigh in on that and then bring it to us, us to make a decision based on the legal opinions that they gather from them. That's what I think the, that's the process here that we're going through, Mr. Maxfield, I think. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I mean, I'm certainly not a lawyer, so I'm always open to getting counsel. But my opinion at this time, it seems like we could, we could move forward on this. But I guess I'd like to hear from the rest of the board what they think as well.
Yeah. Mr. Langsdell, I was just hoping with you and your experience on the, your tenure on the board, maybe you've dealt with this difficult issue in the past, and maybe you can give us the benefit of your experience.
Excuse me. I would say that right now, it seems as though what we're arguing, arguing, what we're discussing is sort of what the intent was in 1986 and what we're allowed to do with that now, how things have changed. It's, it's sort of like the originalists with the constitution. You know, does the constitution live or is it stuck in 1776? Or 70, 70, 80, whatever. I don't know what the intent was in 1986. Mr. Meadows was there, and that's- Mr. Meadows was there and that's terrific, uh, it's good to hear from him. I would like to find out if there is a way to. Find out when this was voted on in nineteen eighty six, what was, what was? Specifically presented and what was specifically voted on. Then I would like to get the town council. Get their, uh. Decision about this. Because I think what we're asking, what we're looking at is if two is an absolute. Does that mean then that it trumps eight? But if eight is an absolute. How neither can trump the other one? It seems to me that that's. Possible shaky ground for the board. Because, uh, we are dealing with. A very, a really undersized lot and, um. I, I, I would hate to see us step in and say, well. Section, uh, uh, number eight and nine point two two says that we can go ahead and, and make a decision, whichever that may be. When in fact, there's maybe a legal standing, why that's not a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Langsdale. Ms. Parks.
I agree, I think I would be more comfortable with further advice. From my experience, we had looked at converting a garage and. It was if it were to rent it out, I mean, it'd have to be, you have to be owner occupied in that. The residential manager issue comes up. And, um, you know, we were wanting to make an in-law apartment. I don't know, I, it was very unclear when we, when I was looking into the possibility of doing this. But I also, I'm concerned about under nine point two two, where it says it would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Because. It feels from comments like it would be detrimental to the neighborhood. And so I don't know at what point nine point two two. Is at play within eight and two.
So that's, you know, that's a good point, Ms. Parks, I think that, um, first of all, I hear that you, you'd like to get additional comfort on the legal standing of. Answer, answering some questions on eight and two. That, and, and I understand that, but one of the things we do have to remember is that nine point two two. Says we have discretion to make this decision, we have to, in fact, we have a fine, we have a responsibility to make a finding that it is not that, so if we. If we are not comfortable with that this would. As a board, if we believe that it does. Serve to the detriment of the community. Then we cannot, we, if we can't make the finding that it would be not harmful to the community, we can't approve it. We have to make the findings, so nine point two two, it works with, with, um. Three point, three point two four one. Works that way by saying that we have to make some findings that it's not detrimental to the, in fact, that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood or the community. And so does, um, and as well as eight. Requires us. To, um, that it be, eight requires us to, to find it, uh, through provisions of nine point two two. So they do work together. And again, finding that we have the authority to do this doesn't mean that we have, finding that we have the authority to grant. A waiver from the dimensional requirements of three point three two four one does not mean we have to approve it. As, you know, we always have the discretion that it isn't, that is in our, um, our. Judgment as to whether it meets with the bylaws, it meets with the, the, the master plan, it meets with the, um, it benefits the community, that's always there. Yes, Mr. Langsdale.
I think, uh, to what Ms. Parks was talking about. Ye- yes, you're, what you said about nine point two two is exactly right. The problem is at the moment, we don't have a proposal. To judge. Mister judge. We don't have a proposal, I mean, the opening tonight was that they were going to go from three apartments to two. Well, that's a change, so we need, it, we need, I think we need to say, okay, we're going to talk to town council, we'll continue this till January. Whatever date. We'll talk to town council when we get, uh, a decision from the town council. That can be then, uh, given to the applicant, uh, and Mr. Pill, and if they want to work, if they need to work stuff out. Before January, fine, if at that point. It looks like it's not going to be able to go forward, then the applicant can. Back out if they want to, or we go ahead, uh, and, uh. Deal with the, the. The provisions, uh, at that next meeting, along with then getting, uh, after Mr. Sparkle has done his work. And others, uh, then we will have a real plan in front of us to, to discuss. So at the moment, I'm saying, we don't know if it's going to be detrimental or not.
Yeah, we don't know.
Yes, that it's going to be, but we don't know yet.
All right, well, it seems to me that there's a consensus among the board members for us to ask town council. To opine, but before I, before I move for that. I would want to open it up to staff, either Dave or Maureen, do you have anything you want to enlighten us with or ask or, um? Provided additional information.
No, no, I think you got.
Okay, so.
Add anything extra.
The one thing I could add, it's more about scheduling, um. You know, uh. Planning department wouldn't want Bucky to start his professional work. On this until he knows that. There's a project to work on. So the applicant has requested a continuance until a date certain in January. However, um. Uh, perhaps. It, uh, i- if the applicant wants to get a response by attorney Joel Bard or, or town attorney. To respond sooner, um, would the board want to? Continue the public hearing until December. To hear from Joel Bard either by. A memo, uh, correspondence or in attendance to confirm one way or the other. And then, uh, the January public hearing would be. Well, if, if, if this were to be continued. With the application. Just, uh, so, but Bucky has time to, um, actually to, um, conduct his work.
You know, um. We, we, I really want to leave it up to the applicant. The applicant said, give, give me till January, let's move it till January, the applicant shouldn't be, um. If, if we can get Bard to give us an opinion, that should be before that. Before January, that can be shared with the, the, um. The board, the neighbors and the applicant. Um, I think. And they can make their own decision as to whether. The applicant wants to engage further with either legal or design consultants and invest some money. But, um, and I don't want them to invest it, it's not going to. It's not, it's not a possibility, right? But I think we should keep, he wants to go to January, let's let him go to, the applicant. Continue this to January, if we can get, um, something from town council in the meantime, that can be distributed and, um. And we can move on in, in January.
May I ask a question?
To me the best. Seems to be the best way of, of dealing with it, yes, Mr. Sparkle.
Um, is it possible, ju- just because I think Maureen has an excellent point. That if we, we do find out something more definitive about. Requirement number eight, if that's possible in December, maybe we could show up at a public. Is it possible to do as a public meeting for just that bit of information, we're stuck, we're, we're doing a hearing no matter what, all right, that's, that's fine. I, I really do. Like the idea of getting some definitive answer. About this topic, so. The professionals in the background can move forward for a January meeting. And I think when my client requested January, I'm not sure that the, uh, question about number eight and, uh, the. Sort of rat's nest of information that we find ourselves tangled in now was, was in his awareness at the time.
Oh, I appreciate what you're saying. Maureen, what do we have for the schedule on December? We already have.
Uh, December tenth would be the next available.
And we have, do we have things already on the agenda? Probably.
Probably, uh, breaks the thin and, um. His fence and. Actually, uh, that and, um, there is a special. There, no, no, there's, uh, two public meetings that are, that I know of.
Okay, so we got, we do have items on the agenda. So listen, so, um.
If we could confine it just to number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Sparkle. I think what we should be doing is getting, we don't know how long it's going to take, Mr. Bard to do this. I don't want to, the December meeting is, is, uh, three weeks away, right?
Four.
Is it four weeks away? December eleventh. And then we'll want to have, if, if we get it out, then if he gives us an opinion, I'm sure we'll get opinions that people who have the other opposite view will want to also weigh in as well. So I'm inclined to go to, and so we won't have that. We won't have all the fulsome result before the board to make, uh, to make us comfortable one way or the other, I think in December. So let's move it all to January, if the result comes back from Mr., uh, Mr. Bard, that's great, let's, we can, we can, um. Distribute it broadly and we will. Be in, in, in January on this matter, because I think, I think that's the best way to go about it. Okay. But is there, so we should probably have a motion as to when we reconvene, when we continue this meeting until. And I would move that we continue this. In, in January, the January eleventh. What's the date?
No, wait, hold on a second, sorry, um. That was March, that was the March eleventh.
We have a lot of elevens.
January ninth.
Okay, I move that we continue this till January ninth.
At what time? At what, uh?
It's six o'clock or six, yeah, what is, what have we been doing, we've been moving back and forth, so. I guess Dylan and Joan have. Have time constraints, right? Six thirty is better for you, Dylan?
Six thirty is, is a lot better.
And Joan is six, Ms. Ramirez, is six thirty better for you? I think it has been in the past.
I will say that I spoke to the building commissioner. Uh, regarding, um, the Board of Licensing Commission meetings and their meetings can start. Earlier and that, that should not dictate the, the zoning board of appeals meeting. So if, if six o'clock. Uh, is the preferred time, the board of licensing meetings, uh, there is a member on that, um, who. Had said that six thirty is bet- better, I think based on that meeting, on those meetings.
So they can start earlier? The licensing can start earlier?
It, was that your, um, issue, uh, Dylan?
No, the, the, they, they can't start earlier because I work until five. So they start at five and then.
Oh, interesting, okay, with the building commissioner had, had, I had spoken to him today and he said. Otherwise, but all right, we think, we can continue with six thirty.
So we'll do six thirty on January, I've already forgotten the date. Ninth, right, ninth? It's ninth, all right. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All right, it's an all, this is a roll call vote, so. I vote aye, Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Meadows. Is that an aye, Mr. Meadows? I saw a nod, but we need to, you to mute, unmute.
Can you unmute yourself?
Aye.
Mr. Langsdale.
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Great. All right. That motion, uh, the application is continued until January. The next order of business is, um. ZBA twenty twenty one dash zero six backyard A U D, A D U's, excuse me. Requesting a special permit to allow a supplemental detached dwelling unit as an accessory to a one family detached dwelling. Located at thirty four Baker Street. We had a site visit. On this week and at that site visit, well, first off, before we go into that. For this matter, Mr. Langsford, Langsdale is. Is not sitting and Mr. Greeney is sitting on the panel. We had a site visit on, I think it was Tuesday at thirty four Baker Street. We viewed the boundaries of the, um, property. We looked at the location of both the barn and the house. We, um, walked the property to, um. Get a sense of the size of the house, um. And the size of the barn and the proposed dwelling, we asked questions about the height and the width. We asked questions about what trees would be removed. Uh, we asked questions about screening for the neighbors. And we asked questions about the number of stories of the proposed, um, structures. Uh, there was some, uh, discussion about soil analysis. And we asked about plans to conduct soil analysis and, and at what time that soil analysis would be completed. Those are my memory of the issues raised in our site visit. Is there anything else that were, that was raised in our site visit that I did not mention?
Maybe, maybe you mentioned, I didn't hear, uh, that we. Saw the rough location of the buildings. You mentioned that?
Right, I referred to walking the, the, um, dimensions of the building, yes, yep, yep, that's good. But it's a good catch, all right, anything else? Okay, what we have received as a submission, we've received, uh, special permit application, a management plan, an application narrative prepared by backyard A D U. Um, a plan set including, uh, proposed accessory dwellings. Locus maps, detached supplemental apartment floor plan, supplement, supplemental apartment elevations, a red, a, a plan for the writing studio floor plan. Writing studio elevations. We received, um, cut pages for exterior light fixtures. And we have a staff submissions of a project application report. Prepared by the planning staff, comments from the Amherst wetline and minis, wetland minister and comments from the fire department. That's what, that's, um. Summarizes our, the documents we have before us. Who's here for the applicant?
I'm here, Chris Lee.
Mr. Lee, hold off just one second, I didn't ask about this, uh, before, is there any, are there any, um? Declarations that anybody wants to make? I know Mr. Langsdale has recused himself from this, but anybody else have any declarations regarding this project? Okay, or disclosures? All right, Mr. Lee, go ahead. Name and, and affiliation, please.
Yep, uh, my name is Chris Lee, I am, um, head of design development at factory A U's, a company that is focused on helping homeowners build. Uh, these supplemental apartments or accessory dwelling units, depending on what they're called per town. Build them in their backyards and it's, uh, usually being built for family members, which is also the case in this situation. Um, I'm representing Kelly Light and her mom Bernice, uh, they are requesting a special permit to build a seven hundred and ninety square foot detached supplemental apartment. Her mom has recently moved here from New Jersey in wake of the pandemic to be closer to her daughter. She actually arrived here, I believe, just last week. Um, and is looking forward to, uh, seeing this go up. Um, also as part of the plan, uh, we're not requesting a special permit for this. But as we're in the wetland buffer, we had to present this to the environmental commission. Uh, we are building a, a seven hundred square foot, uh, barn inspired writing studio, uh, Kelly Light is a, uh, children's book author. And she'll be moving from where she's renting space in Eastworks in East Hampton, uh, into this space full time, um, to, to write. She's, and this is under a section of the bylaw for, um, home businesses, she doesn't. Propose to hire any employees and has no expectation of doing so, so we think that's right in line with, with what is allowed. I will share my screen and kind of walk through the site plan, I know we did some of this on site. Earlier this week. Screen number two, all right. Can everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so I'm zoomed in here on the, on the site plan, uh, Daniel solves, a, a local surveyor helped us put together and he. Did shoot, uh, actual contours on site with his equipment. Actual contours on site with his equipment. We also had the wetlands flagged as per the requirements of the environment, the Wetlands Protection Act in Amherst. By Ward Smith. And in doing this have the, the necessary setbacks marked as well. And you can see with the plan, I'll zoom out just to give you an idea, general idea of the space. So at the top of the property is the existing, is the existing home. There is an existing parking spot, it fits comfortably three cars. And there's a gentle slope going down towards the street and some wooded area. That, that screens the property from the road and neighbors across the street. The other thing of note, looking at this site plan, and Erin Jock pointed this out on her visit. Is the current driveway. Creates a high point. Between the wet, the protected resource area, the wetlands and the proposed structures. Which is one of the things we've been looking at as we have been evaluating what the, what the needs are going to be to. Control stormwater and prevent any unwanted sediment and erosion from going into that wetlands, including the wildlife habitat and ending up downstream. As there is an intermittent stream in here. We do, we, in addition, we're proposing one additional parking spot. That brings the proposal in line with what's required by the zoning bylaw. As it requires two parking spots per dwelling unit on the property. This additional spot will give the property a total of four. The parking spot. Per request of the environmental commission during that hearing will also be installing. The honeycomb impervious pavers in order to keep that spot impervious, so, or pervious, I'm sorry, misspeak. So we're not putting any, at risk of putting any water into the wetlands. They also brought up that we, that on the northern property, which is out of their jurisdiction, that we should consider. Some form of erosion control, which we, which we do intend to do, and I believe we'll dig into that more as, as the hearing progresses. In terms of what we are building, I'll move, we can skip through, I think people know generally where we are. This is the structure that we are proposing to build, we're building seven, 790 square feet. It's going to be two bedrooms, really Bernice is probably going to use this extra space as a craft room or just an extra space to do things in, and she'll be the only one living in it. Shared kitchen, living room area and a little, and a mudroom to come in. And keep the, keep stuff out of the small living space. We do have lights at the exterior exits, these are downcasted. And in terms of both of them, not really in sight of, of any of the neighbors. Finally, this is a single floor supplemental apartment to keep it more accessible for Bernice as she ages. We are, we have styled this to look traditional New England, so we've got gabled roofs, white trim, it's clapboard. And window lights. And then in terms of the other structure, which again, we think this is in line with the, we're, we're not applying for a special permit for this structure, but we did want to present it because it's part of what we'll be doing. We are building this barn inspired writing studio for Kelly to work out of. And it will have basically a big open concept space downstairs, I think there will be a fireplace added at some point, an outside deck. And because this is vaulted ceilings, we had a 12, 12 or 12 pitch roof. We are putting a loft up here in order to get a little bit more floor space in here. We, we didn't need the entire space to be lofted. And by putting in this, this loft, it created a nice cozy spot for Kelly to write out of. In terms of use of this, we, Kelly's probably going to use it as a reading room. Family guests may stay there on occasion during the holidays. But there is no intention right now of, of having it be rented or anything, as Kelly's going to be working in this, in this full time. And I think with that, I, I'll, I'll hand it back over and we can kind of go through some of the questions that were brought up in that report. Prepared by Maureen.
Great, all right, thank you, Mr. Lee. So the first question I have is. You don't have any kind of landscaping plan, you asked for a waiver of a landscaping plan, right?
Yep, we were proposing landscape right now.
Your what?
We, we're, we're not proposing a landscaping plan right now. There, there's nothing, it's not visible from the street and most of the neighbors and the one neighbor that this is visible of, it hasn't raised any objections or concerns. Kelly and her mom is, are probably going to work on gardens as a project together sometime next year, but we didn't want to put that in here. As it wasn't part of the project at this time.
Do you, do you need a waiver for that?
Do I need a waiver for that?
I mean, isn't, isn't a landscaping plan of some normally required? Or is that, Maureen, is the landscaping plan normally required into this situation?
Yes, yes, so the, yes, so the applicant has formally requested a waiver.
Are you doing any screening for the northerly neighbors?
We are not, Stephen and Phoebe have not voiced any concern about this, Kelly is friendly with them and they've been in conversations. So they did not, they, they did not ask for any. And the structures are modeled to, to look nice, to not destroy the view. The barn is also similar to one that, similar in size to one that's in their property as well, so it's somewhat even. So the answer is no, but there hasn't been any concern raised, and if there had been, we, we would have proposed something.
One of the things that was brought up at the, at the meeting was you mentioned that you were not going to do a soil analysis. Is that correct, you want to wait doing your soil analysis until after construction? Please, please comment on that, because that, I'm, you, you have to, you, you're going to have to explain why that should, why that should be the case.
Yeah, so. When it comes to, so when, when we look at, at this plan, we're, we're relatively flat, we're, we're sloping. Away from the wetlands. And erosion, any, any water runoff is going to go towards the trees, now I'm not an expert in, I'm not a civil engineer. So I don't know to the extent that will be damaging the habitat in those trees or, or on the lawn. But as we were, but in, under the advice of Maureen. We have tried to contact civil engineers to engage on this project. One of the things that the civil engineers wanted to do before making a formal proposal was to dig a test bit. And do a soil analysis, which would have come at the expense of the homeowner before we knew whether or not we were even going to be allowed to do this. Now, we have to dig.
It also may, it may influence and inform whether we, whether you can do it or not, depending upon the soil analysis, so. Chicken and egg, chicken and egg question there, so.
Correct, and I'm not asking for a waiver on it, I'm, I'm not trying to circumvent rules around it, I. As we need to dig the foundations and we need to propose something. What I was, what I'm proposing to the board in terms of, of mitigation is to. Withhold any kind of, at the building commissioner withhold any kind of occupancy permit on these. Until the town engineer has reviewed plans submitted. After they've been able to do their analysis when we've broken ground. It seemed, it seemed with this scenario, as it's already been said, that we're not going to be impacting the wetlands, the, the runoff is going towards a grassy area and then going into a wooded area. That it is a lower risk project. That this is a situation where we could do that soil analysis, that time of excavation. Especially given the timing of this project, if we were to. Dig and do this, this 10 foot hole to find the water, the water table and to figure out the drainage points. There's a chance that the, the lawn would be ripped up and possibly cause more erosion into the area between now and when we can reseed it in the spring. So we were kind of thinking about trying to figure out, how can we do this all at once and prevent? Extra excavation, extra construction sediment and so on.
Yeah, and I understand what you're asking, but you're in effect, I don't want to be argumentative, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
You're asking to get a construction permit to build, to start the building process before you do the soil analysis. And then once that start, once you start to actually put a shovel in the ground, then you want to do the soil analysis. You want us to approve it, right, okay.
Yeah, if, if it's required by the board, and the other, the other piece in here, the zoning bylaw does not have a, a bar, like any specifics about what. A adequate erosion control is. It, it does not discuss that in the bylaw, as far as I could find, there is, there is lots as it relates to impacting wetlands. But as we know that this isn't going to impact the wetlands, per Aaron Jock's comment about the driveway. We're not really sure what we're protecting, what, what level we're protecting to. So that's, that's another reason to hear directly from the board what we, what we should be aiming for and how it should be judged, whether it's a town engineer. Or if it's just a stamp of a civil engineer that would say we're not impacting any critical resources or the wildlife habit and potentially in those, in the wooded area.
All right, I, I did have another question on the, on the other building. The barn. You know, I look at that and I think, you know, that's potential dwelling unit at some point in time, it's not designed right now. What is, what's the, what's underneath the loft? In that, in that proposed barn, we see the, from the, the bird's eye view, you see the, that one, what's, what's below the loft?
This area?
Yeah.
This is all open space down here? This is an open staircase and this is just where Kelly's going to set up her desks and, and computers for writing and sketching.
So I'm, I'm going to understand, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I, earlier this week, I, I asked the applicant to. Resubmit the floor plans with labels, so in this presentation. He just didn't use the, the sheets that have the labels, so in your updated floor plans. Which you may have, you only have electronically, that is work office area underneath the loft. As, or that is how it's labeled, I believe, hold on a second.
Yeah, I believe that's what I called it. Work area underneath the loft where the. There are no walls or doors in here, the only door in this is for the bathroom, there's no closet, so it's not. It would be another building permit in order to convert this to any kind of. And you'd have to add a kitchen, there's no kitchen in here, it's, it's just the bathroom, so the best, the best it could be used for, as I mentioned, it might be for a family guest to stay here over the holidays, but it's not really suitable for. A dwelling unit, the definition.
Chair, Dave has.
I can't see it, okay, Mr. Skelips?
Yeah, hi, how do you access the writing area? It looks, it looks like you've got walls all around it, you go under the stairs, under the landing?
Could you zoom in and, and X out of your page thumbnails? To the left, yeah.
So it, it's an open staircase, this is eight, this is seven, eight feet ahead of room underneath here.
Okay.
You can walk right underneath them.
At that corner?
Yes, I think the six foot headroom, as I have marked here, starts right there.
Other, members of the board have questions of the, of Mr. Lee? So you, you have a question? Mr. Greenie, I, I didn't see your hand raised, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
There you go, oh, now you've muted, there you go.
All right. I forget about the hand raising, sorry. So I don't know if this was in the information and I missed it, but. Is the intention to start this? Next spring or this fall?
So what we'd really like to do is receive an approval with some kind of contingency this evening. That way we can break ground on this in December and get Bernice moved in by end of February, March. We do not receive an approval contingency on it, we will not be breaking ground on this until April. When the grounds re-thaw, we, because if we come back for a continuance in December. It, it will be very unlikely that we'll be able to break ground before things freeze up. And that's, I just want to reiterate on the, we're not trying to avoid any stormwater mitigation, we, we understand the issues surrounding erosion control and how it includes our streams and our waters. We just do not want to pre-dig a 10 foot test bit at, at cost of the homeowner. Right before we're going to be digging foundation holes, we would like to do that all at once. And we'd like to have some contingent, contingent approval where we submit something after we've done that. And the town engineer reviews it and provides his opinion, his, his engineering opinion on whether or not it's adequate for this project. Given the contours, the direction of the runoff, the permeability of the soil and so on.
So you're, I want to go back to parking for a second.
Sure.
So you, you, you would need two dwell, two parking spaces per dwelling unit. Right now, there's three for the existing. The existing house. You're going to provide one? And where would that be?
So we're adding one more. Near the new dwelling unit, which is where Bernice will be parking. So in total, the property will have the required number of, of parking spaces and we're adding one. And we don't want to add more than we need to down here, because again, we're in the wetland buffer, there's no need to disturb more than, than is required, and Bernice only needs the one spot.
And the light fixtures are downcast?
Yes.
Dark sky compliant?
Yep, absolutely.
Mr. Lee, you know, I'm, I'm having trouble with, with getting any kind of contingents, I'm having trouble with giving a approval or a go ahead at this point, I think you need. I feel like I need a lot more information about this project than I have before me. I, you know, I feel like I need more about the, the. The more about the. The out, the exterior, what it looks like, I think I, I'm, I'm not comfortable in, in holding off on the soil until a later point in time. I'm not comfortable that. Without having a landscape plan and other. Other. Normal, what is normally required by this board. And I'm, so I, I'm having a hard time taking it, this is, this is ready, I think we need to, in my, my initial feeling is that this, you need to work more with the town to try to get. All the requirements that they normally have on. Two buildings in the, on that lot and, and get that back to us before we can comfortably. Vote to approve this, and I think it's a, a good idea, I'm not opposed to the, the notion, I just don't think it's, I don't think it's, it's ready yet, that's what I'm telling you.
Um, so can we, can we go through those one by one? In terms of what does the exterior look like beyond elevations, are there, are there questions about the elevations and the materials that you have, because we, we do have all of that information. We're using vinyl siding, we're using clear, clear trim, which is a high end PVC board. We're using double pane windows with window lights. We're going to be doing this as red. What other information about what, what the exterior is going to look like on this, would you need?
What's the roof, asphalt shingles?
Asphalt shingles, yep. Asphalt architectural shingles. We're going to be having polymer shit, cedar shake, cedar impressions on the gable ends. It's, it's a standard seven inch. It's a standard seven-inch aluminum white fascia board. We've got three and a half inch clear trim around the outside, also white. We've got five and a half inch corner boards. And I can, I can do the same for the barn. The barn is going to be sided with LP smart sideboard and batten. It's a nice engineered product for it to look like a true wood finish. We're also going to have traditional wind, traditional windows. They're going to have the three transoms above. We're going to be using the clear trim work in order to give it a very nice finish. We're also, we're going to be doing asphalt shingles on the barn as well to match the house. Same seven and a half inch vinyl aluminum fascia on the, on the ridges. And this will be white.
And that will be white?
Yep.
I also was, one of the things that you're asking that you, we waive the the sample lease, the complaint response form, landscape and sign plan. In your, for the current owner of that property, but this, that makes sense. It's going to be a, a family member that's there, I understand it, but the application probably, the application of the special permit would, would survive for new, into new ownership. And so I, I don't think that we should be waiving those. You can, you can certainly do a lease for $1 a year and you can have a complaint response. But you need something so that when this, it's this property, when it's this property transfers to somebody else, there's a plan in place. A lease in place that we can then review, because when somebody would buy this, they would have the ability to rent this out.
So.
So that's, so that's, I would, we would need to, to look at that.
I guess.
Suggestion.
I guess for clarification, are you asking us to create a lease for use by a future owner?
No, you can use it by this owner, but we, we need, this can be used as, in the future, this could be used as a rental property after, or rented out. It absolutely could be. And I, and the special permit flows with the property. So I'm not, I don't think, I, I'm not comfortable saying that we were going to waive all those requirements. You could, you can have a lease that, that is for one, $1 a year. You can have a complaint response that, but you have some kind of so when the new owner comes back, they say we have to modify the management plan, the lease plan for this, but we
Maureen had a proposal for a contingency on that for change of ownership that she included in the project report.
So if the board is amenable to this, you could make a condition of the special permit saying that if if the is to be rented, that the, the applicant shall submit a a lease and complaint response plan. You also could have another condition saying on change of ownership of the property that it updated management plan be, be submitted regardless of the property is to be rented or not.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Park.
I'm just looking at the suggested conditions and number 15 is on change of ownership. The new property owners will be required to return to the ZBA at a public meeting for review and approval of the management plan and complaint response plan.
Missed it. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm, it doesn't, it's not, the numbers and it's not, I don't have a page number, but it's number 15 of the suggested conditions.
I, I caught it. Thank you, Ms. Park.
It's on page 15.
Conveniently.
Conveniently. But, but there could be another condition saying that if the dwelling unit is to be rented. Well, condition, hold on a second. Condition eight says any dwelling unit on the property being rented shall be registered and permitted in accordance with the residential rental property bylaw. Perhaps the next condition could be any dwelling unit on this property shall be and, and a lease and, a lease and complaint response plan shall be required to be submitted for the board for review and, and approval for any dwelling unit on the property being rented. Something like that.
Other questions for, from the board members for Mr. Lee? Yes, Ms., Ms. Amira.
Thank you. Two questions. One is, is the barn in never to be considered a residential unit? Because I think I saw a shower in there.
It's not going to be considered a residential unit. It's lacking a kitchen in the, the three. It doesn't have a sleeping area. That's closed off. It doesn't have a closed closet. It doesn't have a kitchen.
Sorry?
It said, so it will not be considered one. It would need to have another building permit pulled. Back in front of the ZBA for permission to convert it.
And I think I understand that the total units will never be sold individually, that it's in perpetuity. Never can say that word right, but it can never be divided.
I don't think that's part of the supplemental apartment zoning bylaw. However, that is not in the plans to do that. We are not going to be selling the ADU separately.
But I think the ZBA can stipulate that it can't be sold separately. Is that correct, Maureen?
As like a condo? I would need to speak with the building commissioner about that.
I would need clarification on that as well. Thank you. And the heating source for the barn?
So both the barn and the supplemental apartment are going to be heated with mini splits. So it's all electric. I didn't notice both of these.
Where are they located on the drawings?
Don't believe they, you mean on the, in the interior heads or the exterior compressor?
Either.
So they're not located on the drawings.
Okay.
But I don't, is there a requirement for whether, as we're nowhere near neighbors, I didn't anticipate there being a requirement for the location of these.
Sorry, what was the question, Steve? I'm sorry.
Well, we're, if there were going to be many splits for both these, wondering where the mechanical, where they're in the drawings. I don't see any indication of where the many splits would be either on the, the, in the wall or the mechanical devices on the ground.
They're, they're not, they're not in the plan because it's not required by the zoning bylaw for the site plan. If it was, they'd be here.
Mr. Vasquez, do we have other things that we are looking for from the applicant before we can move forward is? And number one, don't we need to have the heating? Is there a requirement that the heating and cooling mechanics for this HVAC mechanics for this, for a property be shown on the drawings before we, before it be approved?
So Steve, if I could, in the past, we have had people indicate where it's located. More importantly, when you are adjacent to neighbors fairly closely, because sometimes that noise can be offensive, which we've found to be the case. So I guess it'd be up to the board if they would like to see that located. Other than that, smoke detection plans would be coming along with the building permit, but we don't need that at this point.
Is the HVAC equipment inside or outside?
There's a compressor outside, but I, the nearest, the nearest house is at least 250 feet away. These are not going to be heard by adjacent neighbors regardless of where they're placed. They'll also not be seen by the adjacent neighbors.
Okay, so under the management plan for additional information, sorry, I'm, I'm trying to find it. Let me, let me just do a keyword search. So for additional information required for apartments, it does list noise management of tenants, parties, music and any outdoor HVAC equipment. So material, equipment and large household goods storage. So it'd be useful if you could include that in your management plan of describing the HVAC equipment and then showing that on the site plan.
We're, we're not creating apartments. We're creating a supplemental accessory unit.
Yeah, and so
Huge system, but these are small, low decibel units.
Yeah, so could you show like a box and label it?
Are we at a foregone conclusion that we're going to a continuance? I, I feel like we're kind of there. I just, so a lot of this is not stipulated in the zoning bylaw, which is puts developers, construction people, architects in a very tough position. And it's this is a professionally preferred site plan. We've got professionally prepared, prepared drawings. There aren't any details. We, we haven't talked, we need to talk more about the landscaping plan. I, as far as, there are no rules in the zoning bylaw about what is the landscaping plan must contain. So if I come back and say the landscaping plan is to reseed the grass, we're not going to go further than that. Because we're not, we're not, we're not ready to say what types of bushes we're going to be putting in. The homeowner does not want to spend additional $5,000 to hire a landscape architect to do that. And it's not required by the zoning bylaw. It is landscaping is required to give the, the development street appeal and to make sure that neighbors are not put off by it. In this case, neither of those are an issue. We have plenty of screening from the road. And the neighbors Phoebe and Stephen have raised no concerns about this project from an aesthetic standpoint or a screening standpoint. The only thing that a landscaping plan could be brought up for is the stormwater mitigation as it goes for for rain guard, which I, which, which I, as far as I can see is the only thing that this plan is lacking and we are not trying to avoid it. We are trying to put ourselves in a position where we are not digging twice at expense to the homeowner unnecessarily. And we're not putting a position where we are going to disturb protected earth near a wetland and leave it open and dirt for the entire winter where it will impact the wetland.
Alright, Mr. Lee, I, I understand that. There are ways you can put socks around. You can, you can protect them cheaply and it's done every day. You can protect the land, the, the wetlands around the site that you have to dig for, for a pit.
It's
Yep. They do it all the time. So I, I understand what you're, I understand your frustration, but also, and, and this isn't a, we're not going to have a two and pro here. What we're going to do is have the, we've heard from you, we're going to have the board discuss this a little bit. If they have other questions, they can ask you. But one of the things that I am impressed with is that the zoning bylaw isn't always exact, but it leaves up to the discretion of the zoning board of appeals to say we feel good, we, we feel comfortable, we're ready to act on this or we're not. And that's what we're going to, that's what we'll discuss in a little bit. And if we are, we will act tonight. And if we are not, we'll wait till, we will act to a later date.
And, and if you don't, I just asked that we have very specific requirements because it's from what we've seen, the first time going through Amherst.
We understand your request, so, and we've had a good back and forth. So I'd like to have the discussion with the board now. So I will open up discussion on this matter, the public hearing or discussion amongst board members as to if they have other questions for Mr. Lee or if they have discussion about this project. So we're in the public hearing. If we don't have further discussions and there's, and we also need to see if there's any public comment as well, since we are in a public hearing. I don't think we have any attendees who are for public comment.
But we do, hold on a second.
We do have one.
Hold on a second. Okay, Fran Van Tress. Hold on a second. I thought I hit it. Oh, here we go.
I'm making mute.
Hi, Fran, you, you can speak now. Can you state your name and your address?
Fran Van Tress, 17 Moody Field Road. I'm in a butter to the east of the project. And this is the first time I've really seen this project. I have a lot more questions. About the number of units here and the future of this thing. And I would request that you continue this hearing so that we have a time to look at this and comment on it. If you vote on it tonight.
You will.
I really am very uncomfortable with that, so.
Just relax, Nina.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, what?
I'm sorry, what?
Sorry, I'm sorry, Fran, you were rudely interrupted. Please continue.
No, that's all. I just would request that you continue the hearing so that we have a time to take this in and comment on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our other attendees, any other members of the public who wish to speak?
Yes.
Mr. Langsdale?
Well, it's actually not Mr. Langsdale. It just says that I am Nina Wishengrad. I live at 43 Baker Street. I just want to say two things. One is that we had not seen these plans. And neither, I just spoke with, you keep saying that you have not heard anything from Phoebe Hazard and Steve Stroud. They've not seen these plans. We've not seen these plans. Excuse me. This is 1,400 more square feet. The house itself is 1,100. Our house is 13. So this is a lot of, this is much bigger than we thought with three dwelling units. I'm extremely concerned about should this change hands? As you've already talked about, what will happen?
Thank you. Mr. Langsdale?
Keith Langsdale, 43 Baker Street. There are several issues that I would like to address. One.
And Mr. Langsdale, can I just stop you for a second? You're speaking as a member of the public, not as a member of the board, right?
Correct. I'm in a butter.
Yep.
It is typical when we, when the board reviews plans that they have a light plot. The, Mr. Lee has stated that the lighting is in fact dark sky compliant. However, what is shown on the drawings are not necessarily dark sky compliant. That needs to be addressed. There needs to be, it is very normal for the board to have in front of them a some sort of rendition of what the lighting actually will be, the outdoor lighting. The landscape plan is also typical and normal. And I would say, Mr. Lee keeps talking about how gradually this, the the slope is from the the west to the east, which it is. But that's the way the water runs. It will run that way down toward the, the road. What he calls a wooded area is a very small area of very few trees. It's not a woods lining the western edge of this property. So the addition of impervious buildings, two of them plus anything else, the porch. Each one has a deck and one has a deck, one has a porch. There's a question of how much the water is going to be affected, which is why there should be a soil analysis and that should be addressed by a civil engineer, which again is normal for the board to hear and to see. The colors.
So just say one's going to be red and one's going to be white. The board should have examples of that, of the what, what red, what kind of red? Is it a fire engine red? That needs to be specified. I think that the, the question of can these parcel, can these buildings be sold separately? Is a huge one for us as a butters. This is a major question. And it should be a condition that they cannot be sold as separate entities, there, there'll be three buildings all of size. Especially the proposed living house has two bedrooms, but there's one person going in there. There's also, there's only one parking area being added for the two bedrooms. That's not normal. This thing about the mini splits and the generator and they're not going to impinge on anyone. How do we know that? There's nowhere is it indicated where they will be? And I, I, I think Mr. Lee said that the nearest house was like 230 feet away. I can measure, I think mine's closer than that, and there's one immediately across the street, which is certainly closer and Stephen and Phoebe's house, I'm not sure, but I would think that theirs would be closer as well. The, the the drawings should have everything on them. And this thing about, I think he said a generator outside the house. We don't know anything about that generator, its positioning, its size, what make. We know nothing about that, we need to know about that. So I guess for, for right now, those are my questions. But I would certainly have more questions if this is continued and they come back with more detailed plans. And I would also ask the board to really consider the the, the act, the fact that these are almost, the, the house is at 790 square feet, which is just under what I think is the 800 square foot allowance. And then the barn is 700 square feet for someone to write in. These are very large pieces to be put on this property as and so I, I have real concerns about it. Mr. Lee also said earlier, nobody has made any kind of questions about it, well, we haven't been contacted. We didn't see plans, no one contacted us, no one asked us anything about this. So now you're getting some feedback on it and you'll get more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langsdale. Other members of the public wish to comment at this point? So.
Yes, yes, hold on.
Do we have one?
Yeah, Phoebe Hazard.
Oh dear God.
Ms. Hazard?
Phoebe, can you hear us?
Yep, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, please state your name and your, your address.
Hi, this is Steven Stroud of 208 Snell Street. And I'm here with Phoebe Hazard. And also of 208 Snell Street. And I just want to weigh in that the, our lack of participation does not imply consent to any of this project. So I, I was informed that other people were speaking on my behalf on this meeting that by saying nothing that that implied consent, and I just want to make it clear that that's not accurate. I, I, I was just listening to Keith and he voiced the concern about the having two new rentable units on this property. And it doesn't appear to be zoned for that. That, that's the biggest concern that Phoebe and I are having. The I mean, yeah, go, go ahead.
I think in looking at the plans, I had anticipated the second house to be a tiny house, which it does not appear to be by my estimation of a tiny house. So I think that was a surprise.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
I think that's it for people, any other public comments?
Kelly?
Hold on, where's this coming? Say your name and your address.
Kelly Light, 34 Baker.
Oh. You're the homeowner of this property?
I am the homeowner, yes. I just, I just want to voice that I did send out a letter to the residents of Baker Street as well as to Phoebe and Stephen um, saying that if they had any questions, I explained the project and I said I am more than willing to communicate and answer any questions that they had. So I just want to correct the, the claim that I didn't provide any information. I have been in contact with people and I have offered to show anything and to answer any questions. So I just want to create, correct that, that, that that claim is not, is not true.
Talk about the arts doing.
We, we included a letter in our wetland notification as well as we were required to send them, and it provided contact information to Austin. That was out there.
And I'm, and I'm still willing to answer any questions that anybody has.
All right, thank you. So if there's no other public comments, going once, going twice, any other public comments? The, the, the tip, our, our process is to provide the applicant with the opportunity to respond to the specific comments of the public if they wish. And I don't want to, I don't want to let that hang out for a period of time, it's best for you, I think, for the applicant to be able to respond directly so that the board can hear your response to and to be some of the concerns, to the extent you wish to respond to them. It's probably valuable to do it tonight as opposed to a later point in time.
Sure, I, I, I don't, I don't think it, I don't think I'm, we, we need to take the time for me to respond to all of them.
No, just the ones you want to.
Well, I, not even individually, I think just in aggregate, a lot of the things that have been brought up, and I said this earlier, it, it's not part of the zoning bylaw, it's not part of the requirements for the site plan. And it would be very helpful for this to be, I mean, if we have to be at this level of detail to get approval in one hearing, I think, I think that that needs to be specified in the zoning bylaw. When we were putting this application together, our, our professional surveyor had to come back to the site on several different on several occasions to fulfill requests by Maureen, who was helping us prepare for this. And even with her detailed preparation, we are not meeting everything that's being required by the board, which again is not specified in the zoning bylaw. So I, we're not going to get anywhere on this tonight. So I'm not going to dig into that, but I, I think and I, I want to, I also want to just say this, so we've been doing this in towns throughout Pioneer Valley, we've been getting approvals throughout. We're very conscious of the environmental impact on these, our homes are net zero ready. We're very conscious of trying to keep the cost down, so this is an affordable option for people's parents who can't afford anywhere else to live. We're doing this in multiple states and.
So Mr. Lee, this is an opportunity to respond to the.
I am responding.
These are not, nobody was talking about that, so please keep this to response to the public comments. You've had your chance to do your, to do your presentation. And then, then the board will discuss and see what we want to do.
So the, the response is the zoning bylaw does not require many of the things that have been brought up in public comment. And I think the decision of the board should be based on what's specifically required in the zoning bylaw. Not some of the additional things that are being added to the zoning bylaw tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee. All right, opportunity for the board to discuss. In the public hearing, we're still in the public hearing, opportunity for the board to discuss this amongst ourselves before we would we, and we can choose to close the public hearing and move to the public meeting and make a decision, we could choose to continue the public hearing at a later point in time, and that way we wouldn't move to a public meeting on this. So those are our two choices, and I suggest that we have a conversation about this, a dialogue about this amongst ourselves and not move to a public meeting unless we reach a conclusion, we're ready to vote tonight. Ms. O'Meara?
It's, it's feeling adversarial, and I don't mean that for this to go that way. And I want to feel like this project can go forward truthfully, in all honesty, honesty. I want to look at the mechanicals. I think that's bare. I think minimal landscaping design layout, even if, even if it's just like reseeding the grass, that, that works. I want to support Kelly and her family in going forward truthfully. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Greenie?
I think yeah, I, I, I kind of agree with Joan, it's, it's gotten a little contentious. I, I, I feel kind of in the middle, I, I think Chris has some valid concerns, he's trying to help small homeowners have supplemental units and not have unreasonable costs. And that's, I, I want to honor that. So I don't have enough experience, but his request for combining the soil analysis with the original digging subject to town engineer approval, that seems reasonable. You know, it's some risk to him, if he, if they dig and they say, oh, this isn't working, then, then he's stuck, so it does have to be approved by the town engineer, that, that seems adequate unless I'm I'm kind of new, so maybe I'm not understanding all this. In terms of landscape design and screening and all that, I think in a small project like this, we've seen the site, it seems like it would create a lot of unnecessary expense. The noise level of the compressors or whatever the heating units are, that might be useful information to have, but it's would be kind of surprising if the noise level were so high that it would disturb the neighbors and wouldn't disturb the people living in the buildings. But maybe we should know the decibel level of the units, I don't know. The thing that to me is the real concern. And I don't see, you know, this is my first hearing, so I don't know, that we might not be able to work this out tonight. But the conditions for resale? So just off the top of my head, and this we need to discuss, it seems like there should be a requirement that the properties cannot be separated. And I think one of the most powerful assurances that the thing would not turn into an objectionable rental situation for the neighborhood would be to require owner occupancy, because the research has shown that the requirement of owner occupancy almost always ensures that multiple unit dwellings remain civil and not, not negative impact on the neighborhoods. So I think that's the thing that I'm most concerned with, and it seems like that's going to take us some time to work out.
Thank you, Mr. Greenie. Ms., Mr. Maxfield or Ms. Parks? Mr. Maxfield?
I mean, I definitely hate to hold up a project that we could potentially move on tonight, but it's definitely not uncommon for the board to, to have, have questions that maybe isn't necessarily clear in the, the zoning bylaw, but you know, part of this meeting, and I think the objective here is really to the to the public and I even just think something like just the, the, the generators alone, that is something we might specifically want to know about, what are, is the, the decibel level of those? I think something like that is definitely going to be a concern to the neighbors that I think if we, if we are going to, to hold this off, I mean, it's, it's, it's a shame with the time that the ground is about to freeze, but our, our priority here is zoning board appeals is, is to the, the public and the impact granting any special permanent waiver is going to have. So I, I, I think if we are going to take this back, we have to be really clear on, on what it is we're looking for. One thing I'd like to know about if, if we do decide to go that route is what are those generators going to be, what are they going to sound like, what's the size, I think those are important to me at least.
Thank you, Mr. Maxfield. Ms. Parks?
All right, and I, I'm also, I am I don't feel bad about this project, I do think it's important for the butters to have a chance to absorb it. I do think that we can add a condition that you know, it can't be sold separately, or if it is, it has to go come back to the ZBA. Or, you know, add a condition that will work that way, I, I'm sure that the intention is not to create additional rental units on this property. So I, 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 I feel the same way, I guess that everyone feels it's, you know, it would be nice to see this go through. But I guess we're feeling like it's, we're not exactly ready.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I, I, I also feel the same, I, I, I'm not opposed to the concept here, I think it's and I think that it's part of the master plan that we have in this town is to try to provide some infill housing and support people who want to, who want to have mother-in-law suites or in-law suites, whatever that you want to call it, or provide housing for families, that's something that is, I think, important for the, the town's goals. But what this feels like is it's not ready yet, and we do have questions, and so I, I would encourage the applicant to work with the staff specifically to talk about what some of the things that we, that we have discussed tonight that we need. So I think more information on the drawings, more information, the HBACs, come up with a landscape plan, even if it's what, you know, whatever it is, come up with a landscape plan for telling, telling us what it is. I'm, I ask, I think you need to convince the town that the soil analysis can be done after, after we approve the after you've gotten the building permit or you started, when you're digging, I think that's the wrong time for that, I don't think that's the right idea. So I think there's several things, and I'm confident that if you work with Maureen and, and the building inspectors will be able to find out the kinds of things that we almost always ask for amongst, for zoning, for applications such as this, for special permits. And I think we, I, I don't think there's, I don't think you're hearing in opposition to the project, I think you're hearing that we need more information and we're not ready to make a decision at this time.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Woskevitz has a comment.
Yes, Mr. Woskevitz.
Yeah, hi. Just a response to Mr. Lee, who was indicating that there's nothing in zoning requiring some of the things that we're asking about. If you look under a supplemental detached dwelling units, one of the requirements, number five to be exact, refers to design review principles and standards, so if you go to that section of the zoning, it talks about different things that should be provided, including landscape, goes into streetscape, topography, all of that, scale, it also talks about choice of materials, color, size, so a whole lot of the things that we talked about tonight. So if you want guidance, look through that, that might help. You have referred to screening being all over the, the neighborhood, but it doesn't show on your, the plan that I'm looking at right now. So it does exist, do you have a plan that shows that? And then my experience with one of your neighbors down the street, I don't remember the address, it was a number of years ago. I was working with the town, starting out, but they built the garage out there and they ran. Uh, but they built the garage out there, and they ran into ledge probably two feet down. Uh, where the water table was also coming out. So maybe a soil analysis where you think you're going to be digging, maybe a full foundation. Uh, might be something you want to do a little sooner so that you're aware of what the conditions are actually like out there.
And I would like to add that section ten point three eight of the zoning bylaw additionally gets into the very. Topics and concerns expressed by the board, um, such as drainage, screening, HVAC equipment, lighting. Um, and its impact on the neighborhood.
Mr. Greenie.
So I I I don't want it to be lost that, at least in my opinion. I I do consider most of the things that were just mentioned as being. Of relatively minor importance compared to the issue of the future of this project. We met the people. Who live there. It's pretty clear. That the impact on the neighborhood for the current situation is is going to be benign. But this could easily be crowded rental units in the future, and I think. The most important. Aspect of what we need to do is to ensure that it remain. That kind of situation and not crowded packed rental units in the future, and I think that's those are the concerns. Of the neighbors that that I heard most strongly.
All right. Um, if there's no further discussion from the board. I move that we continue the public hearing. On this matter until, um, I guess I would like, would you you would, would you be ready, Mr. Lee? Would you be ready in December? December eleventh?
Is there a decision coming out about, are we requiring a ten-foot-deep soil analysis and full engineer mitigate? Are we going with the suggestion of Mr. Greenie? That we may be able to get a contingency with the engineer, because if we have to get an excavator out there and find a civil engineer that it's in their schedule, we're not going to be ready.
Uh, no, I'm, I guess you have to, I don't know the answer to that. The question I had, would you be ready to, are you, would you be prepared to come back and? And and have the amendments to the plan, to have a landscape plan ready and other things ready to discuss it more, and then we can condition. What we do based on the discussion of the board. I don't know if we.
So all all things besides the the engineer drawings, I would say yes, but if but if it's likely that. We're going to attend the December tenth or whatever date it is and be here. Um, I think it's been about four, three and a half hours and and have to go back and and do that and come back in April in January, I would say no. So I I would, I would. Kind of determination on that piece tonight on what.
You're not, you're not going to get, I don't want to make this, I really don't want to make this contentious. I really want to keep the temperature down on this. So. If you, I don't. I think that you can, um, if you want to come back in December, we can continue it at till that point. You can discuss with the staff and others, the town, about what you need to do to provide. Um, the information that we that you heard us tonight, the information we need to make a decision. If you feel that you're not going to be ready, or you don't, you don't want them, that the weather would prevent you from moving forward, you can ask that we can, at December, we can ask you to continue it until the spring. So you have a lot of options. I'm giving you the option to say, we'll have, we'll have enough to to make you comfortable in. December. If that's not right, we can we can continue it on till April, but you're hearing from people here that they want to try to be helpful. And so I'm trying to give you that opportunity to act as quickly as possible. So you come back with drawings. And you and you work with the town in terms of the the soil analysis and what they need to get from you. Okay, if you want to, you want to come back in December.
We we do want to come back in December, but again, I'm hearing that it's up to the ZBA, what we need for the soil analysis, not up to the town. So or the staff or or Maureen, and it sounds like the board may have some split opinions on that. So we're going to be making a decision, me and the homeowner, about whether or not we want to spend five thousand dollars upfront before we know whether or not this is going to. Um, be able to get past the concerns raised by other neighbors, which at this point I'm not so sure it is. So what you're asking us to do is, as I understand, is that we're going to need to go back, spend another five to ten thousand dollars to do this. With the risk of not getting an approval ever. I think that's an unacceptable place to end on for the homeowners.
Your. Mr. Westkevitz, uh, can I just ask a question? What what is required for the soil analysis? What specifically is required? We we normally require soil analysis be done. Analysis, analyze it, you tell us how the soil is going to percolate the water, and then from that, we can make a decision as to whether it's an applicant, whether it's an appropriate place. If you have ledge, if you have other kinds of things underneath there, you're you're going to want to know that. Right, what do we, what what are we typically?
So typically, when when there is an increase of runoff or volume. The town requires that the applicant provide evidence by a professional engineer of how they will handle. Stormwater management. Additionally, uh, as I referenced, section ten point three eight of the zoning bylaw. Specifically, section ten point three eight nine and ten point three nine zero. Are two sections that the board needs to make findings related to drainage. And um, as I've advised the applicant. Several times um, over the last month or a month and a half, that it would be. Uh, useful for the board to have this information. As you make your findings for this decision. Um, so I'm happy to schedule a time for him to meet with myself in the building commissioner to discuss. Discuss how he. Can provide that information to the board. Um, would it be useful for the board to create a list of other items that should be submitted? Uh, I heard. Some comments about perhaps more information about the light fixtures.
Yeah, we heard, we heard the HVAC.
Yeah.
Just a description, at least a description of what it is and where it would be.
Okay.
But we need to know the, I think it's gravel for the parking. Is that? I'm not sure. I I think it's gravel for the parking space. But we should know what the what the parking is.
Color of the buildings. So. Uh, perhaps the applicant could provide like a a sample of what that color would actually look like. Uh, for each of the buildings. Um. Through my notes.
I I think we, you know, uh, we will want to talk to them about the. The ability to separate the units in the future. Um, I think that is a concern that I've heard from board members. Um, so we wouldn't want to be able to sell units individually. I think we'd need to have some kind of a, and even. So I think the word, the concern you're hearing is that this could be rental property in the in the future, and so we we have to, I think we want to. Create conditions that mitigate the opportunity for that to happen. And I think the best thing to do is to work with Maureen and the the staff. They know this, they know the board well, and I think they've heard our concerns, and I think they can relate those to you. And you can decide if in December, if you're prepared to to present to the board at that point and ask for us, if you if you're ready, if not, you can ask for a continuous at a later point in time. We're not closing it off. And you can come back more than once. Mr. Maxwell.
One thing I I I definitely want to hear from the from the board before we finish this, and excuse me, it's it's very late for me. I'm I'm very tired at this point, but I'll I'll try to be as articulate as I can. Um, it sounds like, uh, from what I was hearing from the applicant, they are, they're more than willing to do all this between now and the December tenth meeting to get the rest of the presentation together. But uh, I would like to hear from the board, and I'll I'll give my opinion as well as to the soil sample. The soil analysis and and, you know, trying to do that at the same time. Uh, as as digging the foundation, and unless anyone seems to have some reason why why they couldn't do it, it seems to me. Uh, that's the information they're looking for from us right now. I'm I'm fine with that. That seems to make sense, because if they. Start digging the foundation and that's part of the soil analysis, and then we put some stipulation on there that if the soil analysis says you can't do it, then. You can't do it. Um, is is that something that the board can do? And if so, is that something that the board would want to do? Uh, because I think, you know, that argument to, if you're going to bring that out there to begin digging. And then it says the soil is fine, and then come back out again to dig. I I understand their concern of not wanting to do the soil analysis to then have us then reject this project for a totally unrelated reason. Uh, are we okay as a board with with that that proposal of doing the soil analysis at the same time as the digging?
Well, I think it's, that assumes that we we approve it, and we don't have any knowledge of the soil. So we approve that, we approve it. So I, but in either case, I think, you know, what I do think we should do is, I I don't think we're ready for a decision tonight, and I think we should. Move through and continue this until December. If they want, if they're ready to go at that point, we can, we can talk about it some more. We can even discuss the soil issues at that point. But I don't think that there's, I'm not prepared, and I don't think my other board members are prepared to approve this tonight. And so let's have the applicant work with, work with the town. Let's have the applicant. Um, and the town talk to the applicant about what's the right process, how it is normally done for soil samples and and runoff. And come back in December and and consider it again. That's, and if they want to delay their construction until, if they have to delay their construction until April, that's that is too bad, but. We're not ready to make that decision tonight, and I'm not ready to make the decision to approve this at this point.
I I don't think that, sorry, intro, I I don't think Mr. Maxfield is asking, we're we're just trying to get some.
I, but I don't know the answer to what Mr. Maxwell is asking for right now, and so let's work with the town on that.
Oh, but it's the, Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, um, yeah, I guess I just want to clarify a point. I. Am not comfortable making a decision on this tonight either. Uh, one of the things I'm I'm I've heard from the public comments section was some of the butters. Might have objections to this project on its merits, and that we might consider that might ultimately. We might decide to reject this project, and one of the things between now and that December meeting, as they're working on those concerns, is one of the things we want when they come back to us in December. To be the soil analysis. Do we want that in December? Could we, do we think we could make the decision without the soil analysis? Because if they come back to us in December, we hear from the public and we decide, you know what, we're not approving this project. We vote nay, they don't get the project. That could happen. So are we going to require that they do the soil analysis ahead of time to then potentially have this project get. Rejected for a different reason, or are we okay with them getting everything else but the soil analysis? And then we might, at that time, should we approve the the project, put a condition on saying. It's approved. On the condition that the soil analysis says it's okay to build this, but then let's say that soil analysis comes back and it says, no, then that project is is simply flat out rejected. Are we okay with with that scenario?
What it.
We need the soil analysis before the next meeting. What what's the board's feeling on that?
Maureen and Dave, help us with what's done typically. I don't think it has to be done.
So I just want to clarify the soil, the test pit. And and Dave Westkevitz, please step in. Um, it, uh, the soil analysis is just one step. In providing the drainage uh, plan for this project. So the drainage plan is actually dealing with stormwater. Management post-construction for this project, so meaning water coming off the roofs. Um, and any new impervious, so all impervious uh, surface. So. And then, so that's taking a look at the surface water. The soil analysis is looking at what is the condition of the soil. So you take both that information. And then create a drainage plan and a a stormwater like reporter summary. Um, so it's not just isolated to a soil analysis. It's it's, um, it's one of the steps to get you to a drainage plan. And so the drainage plan, so as you can see on your, on your screen today or tonight, is the contours, I believe, are existing contours. Is that correct, Chris?
Yep, we're in in the second, we're not proposing to change those either, but the drain, the water will drain as shown by the contours across the grass and towards the. Um, not not forest, but tree area.
Okay, so, um. So if there were any changes to the grading, uh, as a result of this, uh, of the two, of the proposal here, um, he would be showing the. The proposed grading um, in relation to the existing grading. Dave, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, I would hope the contours would change a little bit, because as it's shown. It's going sloping downhill as we head to the west, right? Um, I can't read the numbers right now, but. So you would have some contouring happening around the structures to keep the water away from them. So you would be building it up a little bit and deflecting around, so there will be changed drainage patterns or or. Whatever you want to call it. Um, so. That needs to be addressed. You also don't want it going off of the property into the neighbor's yard because of these structures, so. You have to be sure that you set up your your landscaping or your contour, so it is not doing that, and you are what, twenty-five feet, twenty feet to the neighbor's property? So you should be thinking about that.
And typically, am I right? Typically, the stormwater drainage and soil analysis informs placement. And landscaping and grading of a property, and you build off, you use that information to. To to decide, in many cases, to decide how you place and and the the structures. And they, and they inform your placement on the on the property, it seems to me. So I would really, you know, we're getting on to nine thirty. We spent a good amount of time here. Tammy, I saw your hand go up. Ms. Parks, go ahead.
I just, just quickly, is there, so is there like a soil test, which is like you just take a core to see what's there? Or in order to do this kind of drainage thing, you have to do a big excavation?
From my understanding, it's a big excavation, so they can find the um, the water, the water table, and then also look at. The different layers of soil to understand the absorption rates. It's not a small thing. It's generally very expensive. I I I think we should end this, and I just want to say one last thing. It's not related to this project. Based on this, I don't think these can be built affordably in Amherst, Massachusetts. It's a very unfortunate um, result of tonight. And it's going to reflect what what we're doing as a company and and how we advise homeowners in the future. We also have a.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Amherst neighbors to present to elderly homeowners in Amherst about this as a possible affordable housing option, and.
Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee, we're not, we're, we're, we're discussing what we're going to be doing in, whether we want to continue it or not. I'm I'm sorry that you're upset about.
It's not, it's not to me. We we.
But let's, let's move. Mr. Lee, we're in the point now where we're going to have a discussion amongst the board members. I'm, the motion before the board members right now is to continue this to December. Uh, December eleventh, is that correct?
Um, hold on a second.
That's, we were even talking about the time, December eleventh at six thirty.
Uh, tenth.
December tenth at six thirty.
Um, I think we continued another one at six, um, did we, oh, no, no, this would, yeah, this would be, yeah.
So December eleventh at six thirty. If there's no further discover discussion amongst the board members. The motion is before us. It's a roll call vote. Is there any further discussion amongst board members? the motion is before us. It's a roll call vote. Is there any further discussion amongst board members? Roll call, I vote aye. Ms. Parks?
You need a second there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I do. And I, can I get a second? Mr. Greenie seconds the motion. Sorry, thank you.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Ms. Omira.
Question. Do we need a vote to end the discussion?
No, we don't. You don't have to have a a previous question, but we, we had the discussion and nobody was, no people were talking. So we don't typically have a previous question vote. Did you want to say something more? Is that what it is?
No, I.
Okay, all right. And I shouldn't, and Mr. Greenie?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is unanimous. It carries. We're continued until December.
Okay, I wanted to ask whether we can reopen a public hearing. I'm not sure if we can, but when you continued the public hearing for Ms. Fay to March. We didn't say at what time.
Oh, I think we did. We, didn't we have a discussion with Mr. Maxfield? No?
Uh, it wasn't, oh, maybe, oh, okay. A member of the public sent me an email alerting that we might not have said. You know what?
We had a first discussion at six thirty.
Okay, all right. That's good. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
First time we talked about it, the motion was without a, without a time, but then Mr. Langsdale pointed out that we weren't, section, so that one didn't actually go through.
Okay, good, good memories. All right. We're in the good then, or in the clear.
Okay. Ms. Omira.
Can we just review when our next meetings are?
Oh, sure. So, well, so December tenth is the next meeting. Let's see here. Hold on a second. Tenth, we won't be, unless you guys want to meet in December, so December tenth, the following meeting would be December twenty fourth. I assume that folk wouldn't want to do that. So then the following meeting would be January fourteenth. Is that, is that right? January fourteen?
Well, you said the tenth.
I did say the tenth.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe I was looking at the wrong month.
Oh, yeah, it is the fourteenth.
It's the fourteenth.
What's the fourteenth?
Thursday, the January fourteenth.
Yeah, we continued something and we wrote, I wrote January ten.
Yeah, we continued something to January tenth.
That was finer about, that was Neil Mendensen's with.
Yeah.
Bucky and.
I had the ninth, actually. I wrote it down.
Let me go through all my notes. Oh, goodness.
On a Sunday.
Sorry, I know, I know we're running late. I said the ninth, January ninth. Do you guys?
Saturday.
Do you guys mind meeting on a Wednesday? Wait, no, wait, I'm looking in the wrong month again. Sunday.
Saturday.
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 Oh, brother.
All right.
Okay.
Let's go.
That will be fun.
I, I don't know what we're gonna, I actually don't, oh, God, I don't even know how we would even handle that.
We can. Well, there's one way we can handle it. In the past, we have, I know that I have.
Oh, I know how you handle.
We talked to pro forma meeting on that day. I, or one member of the board, I am, have done it in the past. We convene the board, we we continue it on for, for the simple purpose of continuing it to the next date. And we've done that a couple of times, so we can do that again.
Actually, I know the formal way of handling that is re-advertising it. So I'll confirm that with headquarters tomorrow, but um, but yeah, we would re-advertise it in the Daily Hampshire, Hampshire Gazette. And we would send out a butters notice to all the butters. So, sorry, just to, so you guys can. That would be the fourteenth.
Well, do you want to meet on January seventh, though? Because we will have missed December twenty fourth.
Yeah, do you want to do it a little sooner? We can't, yeah, do it on the seventh.
Uh, sure, January seventh works for me.
Yeah. Because I feel like there's a lot, we've had one meeting and we'll have one meeting in December is all.
Oh, goodness. Okay, well, I'm really sorry about that. I guess I'm really glad that we just discussed this. So then, do you still need to continue? Joan, are you satisfied with meetings for a little while? I will send out, I have like a a meeting list for each year, so I haven't done it yet for twenty twenty one. So I'll send that out when that's ready.
All right. Mr. Greenie. Mr. Greenie.
So I'm, I'm curious is since I have no experience with this, how the board will decide on the set of conditions.
So the public hearing is closed.
Yeah, yeah. Well, no, we can't discuss that.
Yeah, it's okay. It's, it's, it's Bob Greenie's first a meeting as a sitting member, and you're doing a great job.
Okay.
Did you want to see if there's any members of the?
Yep, the last, the last item on the agenda is public comment on matters that were not before the board tonight. So if there's any members of the public who wish to speak. I don't see anybody. I think they're all ready to go home. As are we. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, I vote, unless there's any discussion, I vote aye. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Ms. Omira?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Greenie?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you all.
And everybody.
A long meeting.